We also have members of the city staff here with us and members of the public. And so we would like to welcome everybody. I noticed that Chief Warren doesn't have his camera on. He probably doesn't want to make us all jealous because I think he's in Hawaii right now. Yeah, it'd be interesting to see if he has a shirt on right now. Anyway, we do welcome him and appreciate him joining remotely. I'm sure there's other things he'd rather be doing. Okay, so we'll get started. We've asked Mr. Cody Carden to offer our Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Carden. I'll offer our invocation tonight. Our dear crying heavenly Father, we're grateful as we meet as a city council and city staff tonight to discuss the things that we can do in Riverdale to to make it the best that it can be for our residents. We're grateful for this country that we live in and for the freedoms we enjoy. We're grateful for the moisture that we received. We're grateful for our Riverdale City employees and all they do to make Riverdale great and and all they do to serve our residents. We ask at this time that thou would bless us that as we make decisions, we might have thy Spirit to lead us and guide us. That we might do those things that would be pleasing unto thee and and do those things that will be most beneficial for Riverdale. We ask a blessing upon the Riverdale City employees that they will be watched over and protected as they perform their duties and that they might all be able to return home safely to their families. And we offer this prayer and do so in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen. All right, we now have a time for public comment. This is an opportunity to address the city council regarding your concerns or ideas. No action will be taken during public comment. If you do choose to address the council, please state your name and city of residence and limit your comments to approximately three minutes. Seeing none, we'll move on to presentations and reports. The first one is the mayor's report. I'm super excited to announce that Riverdale was awarded two Ramp Easy Grants. So that's very kudos to Mr. Taylor back there. We got $1,000 for the Riverdale Band and $2,000 for our Halloween Carnival. So that is just, the city employees know that I've been pushing and pushing them to apply for grants, whether it's Ramp or, you know, Wasatch Regional Council, anything. So I was just thrilled to see our name on that list. And I'm sure those those groups would be really excited too. I mean, $1,000 would be awesome for the band. And I'm sure you can put a $2,000 to use for the Halloween Carnival.
Mayor, we might mention there, if I could, just briefly, we have actually moved forward with getting a person educated and trained in doing more grant writing for us. So we're excited to see where that's going to lead to, too. Someone who's currently going through the process. I'll leave her name out of it tonight. She's got enough going on, so.
Yeah.
But we'll see where that goes. It's gonna be good. I think we'll see a lot more production in that regard, so.
Very good. Also, at WACOG last night, Mayor Beasley from Plain City asked if they would bring Weber Human Services into our next meeting to discuss senior centers. So that's just kind of a heads up. We'll be discussing that a little bit and what the county's going to do moving forward. That's about all I have for tonight. Number two, city council assignment reports. Anybody have anything to report on their assignments? No. Okay. Number three, special recognition. We intentionally left the person's name off of this so that she would show up tonight because we know she doesn't like the spotlight so much. But I, in my office this last week, I had a letter from Southern Utah University that said Ms. Maragoni had earned a certification. And we have Lisa Smith here from the DMWRA, and we would ask her to come up at this time and explain to us a little bit about what Ms. Maragoni has been up to.
Well, I think we were here not very long ago where she received a certification. She's just go get her. So she has a certification from the United States, or it's from the international organization. This is a statewide that SUU sponsors for us, requires a lot of time and effort and training to earn this and has to be re-earned every five years. So in case you don't know, she's a secretary on our board. So she's very important to us. And Cynthia, here is the treasurer, the treasurer on our board. So we're just really excited. We know she's really, she really works hard for this. It takes most people a lot longer, and she just pushes through and gets it. So we just wanted to make sure that she knows her worth. So we're gonna give her this, her big M.
Proud of you. You did a good job.
Get that certification next year.
Say I'm kind of a big deal.
Socks. Congratulations. And thank you. Thank you for coming. Yes.
For the record, I did invite her husband, but he was, he's on fire in a softball tournament or something tonight, and he couldn't get out of it.
And in case you guys didn't figure it out, she is the one that we're trying to put through some grant writing training and stuff. So we think she'll do fantastic at that. And we just appreciate Michelle, all she does, she wears a lot of hats. We just, whatever we ask her to do, she just does it. And so anyway, thank you, Michelle, for all you do. I know I can text her pretty much 24/7. She just deals with whatever. So anyway, thank you. All right, well, now move on to item number four, the RDA presentation from Mr. Fred Philpott. Hopefully you can hear us and are ready for that. Mr. Philpott?
Yes, yeah, can you hear me?
Yes.
Excellent. Now let's see if I can share my screen. Yeah, I don't see any way to share this PDF. So let me walk through that.
Cody, can you help him with that? I'm just kidding.
Can you see that?
Yeah, there we go.
Okay. So thank you for having me this evening. My name is Fred Philpott. I'm with LRB in Public Finance. And we were asked to review the, to create a high-level sustainability evaluation for the senior housing facility. And in order to do that, we essentially looked at the budget related to that facility and then pulled the information relative to the room and the room rates and then made some assumptions relative to the changes to those room rates and the potential increases necessary to maintain a certain fund balance within this pro forma. We projected out through 2035, and our fund balance objective was to maintain the 1.7 million that is currently in that funded and ensure that that wasn't drawn down through 2035.
Mr. Philpott? Hey, if, can you zoom in on that? We can't read the numbers. And we'll kind of let you know. I can see a zoom at the top. Yeah, that's.
Just as an FYI, we sent these out to you right after Phil sent these to you. So you'll have an email either from me or Michelle. I don't remember who sent it, but you do have this stuff.
It was several weeks ago, right?
It's been a bit, yeah.
Can you guys read that okay?
Are you able to see those?
Maybe one more zoom. Yeah, that's about as, yeah, that's good.
Okay. So as I indicated, what we looked at is projecting those room rates relative to some of the HUD requirements or fair market rental rates. We use that as a benchmark. So our model assumes that the fiscal year 2024 rental rates remain in place for fiscal year 2025. And then, beginning in 2026, we set those to the HUD fair market rent rates for, actually for 2023. So there is a delay here. But essentially, what the model has assumed is we keep the status quo through 25. And then, starting in 2026, all one-bedroom units would be charged the HUD rate for a one-bedroom unit. And then, the two-bedroom units, all two-bedroom units would be charged the two-bedroom rate. And that is a change relative to what you're currently assessing right now. Essentially, the city has a policy or has been a practice that as individuals move out and the unit becomes available, then the rate is adjusted at that time. So there has been some modifications to the rate per unit. But not all of the units, the one-bedroom and two-bedroom units, match the HUD rate right now. So again, this model assumes that by 2026, that would be equalized so that all one-bed and two-bed units are assessed the appropriate rate. And then, we grow that rate through 2035. So you can see out in 2035 what that looks like. As we apply an inflationary increase to those rates, the model assumes that we are assessing about an 11% rate increase for those, which is slightly higher than the historic market rent rate from HUD. Slightly higher than that has grown historically. So historically, that, those comp rates from 2019 to 2024 grew about 9.3% for one-bedroom and 8.3% for two-bedroom. So we are showing a slightly higher growth rate or projecting a slightly higher growth rate in this pro forma to achieve the objective of 1.7 million in fund balance through 2035. So in order to evaluate the outcome of that, again, we then pulled, calculated your rate revenue. So your operating revenue from those, from those rates, in addition to some interest earnings. So there's a little bit of revenue there, but the majority of the revenue within this pro forma is the tenant rents. And then, we compare that to the operating expense. So there's maintenance expense. And then, there are utilities and other expenses associated with the facility. We don't have any operating income included in this, nor do we have any debt service that we're trying to cover. And then, finally, we're also trying to ensure that we fund a level of capital investment. And we're perpetuating what the 2024 budget had included at 200,000 in capital investment. And then, we grow that based on an inflationary figure. Here, you can see the net impact of that. So essentially, as the rates stand, we have a little bit of a deficit and the fund balance gets drawn down. So you can see over time, that gets drawn down. But as we continue to add increases to those rates, then that stabilizes. And at the tail end, you're actually adding to your fund balance here at 2035 and bring that back up. So you start to rebound and actually add to your fund balance. So again, our objective was to try to look at those rates and determine what would need to happen if we were to fund operations and maintenance and your capital investment and try to balance that against the existing fund balance or fund balance target. So essentially, we're showing that needed increase to achieve those objectives. Again, that also assumes that the rates are equalized in 2026 so that, again, all one-bedroom units are assessed the same rate and all two-bedroom units are assessed a slightly higher rate. So that's the findings. Those are the findings of this evaluation. And happy to take questions. We've developed a model that allows us to play around with some of those assumptions. If we want to change the rate increase, what does that look like? Or if we want to establish an alternative fund balance target. So again, this is designed to achieve the 1.7 million at the 2035 time period. But we may say, no, let's change that either higher or lower based on your perspective as the legislative body. So questions or comments on that evaluation?
Counselor Arnold with a question.
Is the capital budget, I'm sorry, Mr. Philpott, this is probably more for Cody. Is the capital budget plan for the whole facility or for the rental?
So right now, we have it set up, I believe, for the whole facility.
So these increases that we're talking about on this report cover the facility?
Correct, for the most part, like if the estimates are right.
I mean, at a budget of 200,000, current budget of 200,000.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep. And the 1.7, that's how much cash we have on hand, like when we started this. So because I think we kind of, some of us kind of look at that like it's almost an endowment, right? And so this model would basically look at it like we're spending the interest that we're earning off that, but we're trying to keep that intact so that we have money for a rainy day and to generate that interest to help subsidize some of those repairs and maintenance and things.
Any other questions?
Is there any changes you'd like to see? If we have time, we'll talk about this a little more with the budget. But is there anything else you'd like Fred to look at with that right now? Are you okay with that going forward? Kind of like.
I think it's really good information that we need if we want to keep sustaining the senior housing. And by having it like this, it's available for people who are interested in living there into the future to know what could be possible. I know that there's a chance that we've talked about other options with the part of the senior housing over there. So maybe, you know, between now and 2035, we won't ever get to that point. But it just depends. We needed that information so we know how to move forward. So it's really helpful.
I had a question.
Go ahead.
So this is, this is based on no, no increases for the coming budget year, right?
Correct. And we'll talk about that a little more when we get to that fund and we're reviewing the tentative budget. But yeah, we just made a couple of assumptions because this, when we had Fred start this, we weren't exactly sure when we were gonna equalize the rents and a couple of those things. And some of that has transpired now, right? But yes, and we can have him tweak that accordingly and then adjust the model.
But by, Mr. Philpott, if we were to do a modest increase for this budget year, it would decrease what we needed to do every year going forward slightly. Is that correct?
Correct. Yes. Yeah, any, in any pro forma that I worked on, the sooner you take action, the longer-term benefit you have. So it helps reduce that long-term impact because you compound that immediate decision over time. It's similar to an investment portfolio. So the sooner we take action, the better it is in the long term. And I also want to highlight, you know, we're looking through 2035. And my recommendation is, as you take action, that you continue to open this up and check the rates relative to the HUD rates and your pro forma to make sure that you're on target relative to that fund balance maintenance. So there may be changes relative to revenues and expenses that will influence some of these figures out in, you know, a couple of years. So it's helpful to just always dust this off and look at it and make sure you're comfortable with that. But yes, the sooner you take action, obviously, the better the pro forma will operate.
I was just gonna say, this just confirms what we've been telling you for a while, that we've got to, we've got to take some drastic action if we want that thing to survive there. Cody mentioned, and Rich is prepared here. He's, he's gone through, based upon some of the information that Fred had presented to us, and he's come up with a plan of how we would implement these changes on a consistent basis and stuff. And we'll get to that tonight if we can. I'm just afraid we're gonna be short on time. And so if we don't get to it tonight, we'll bring it back in in another meeting to show you what that is. And as an FYI, based upon our previous conversation, we just implemented a new, another raise. It just started, I believe, May 1, wasn't it, Rich? So there's already been things taking place. And any new person that's coming in is coming in at the higher ends. I mean, we're doing everything that we, we can think of possibly to save that and salvage it. And I think we're on the right path. This just gives us some hard numbers and just confirms what us non-landlords were thinking and suspecting that we've been preaching to you for the last year or so. And so it was good to get Fred's help on this, just to get hard numbers. And somebody else that's an outsider that can look at this and say, yeah, you guys are on the right path. So that's where we're at. And we appreciate Fred's work on this. It was, it was nice and informative for us, so.
Any other questions for Mr. Philpott? Okay, thank you, Mr. Philpott, for being here tonight.
Thank you, everybody. Have a good evening.
Okay, well, now move on to the consent items. We just have the one consent item. Consideration to approve the meeting minutes from the April 16, 2024 council work session and council meeting. Are there any changes or corrections to those minutes?
There was a small change. There was a small change in the regular meeting minutes near the end where Counselor Haas and I, it talks about whether, we questioned whether the expenditure was the best use of funds. I asked her to tweak it because the intent wasn't whether we should spend the money. It was whether it was the best use of funds to improve benefits for the staff. So it was just a small change.
Okay. Any other changes or corrections? Seeing none, a motion would be in order.
Incorporating the change that Counselor Hanson has implemented.
That's a motion to approve. Okay. We have a motion. Do we have a second? Motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? All in favor, say yes.
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 All right, that passes unanimously. Thank you. We'll move on to action items. Number one, consideration to approve the site plan amendment request for Wasatch Kia dealership located at 770 West Riverdale Road in Riverdale, as requested by H&amp;P Investments. Mr. Cooper?
Thank you, Mayor. As you have said, this is the amended site plan for the Wasatch Kia dealership. I do have a few slides just to go over. Counselor Arnold, you mentioned that the packet is thick. And so we'll go as quickly as we can. There is a significant amount of information in the packet. So you have seen this project before. It is actually partially constructed. And I'll show you a little bit about that here momentarily if our slides will work. Good? No clicky. I'll get it out.
Is it on? It wasn't on.
Okay, can you advance those for me? Yeah, you drive. Well, let me start by giving you a little bit of background on the site. You all know where the Kia dealership is. This was brought to you in 2016 as the original site plan submission. It went through a number of discussions over a period of months. In February of 2016, the planning commission did indeed recommend site plan approval to you as the city council. And the city council, as a city council, you discussed this a number of times. In February 21, you actually discussed it and ended up tabling it to a later date, which was February 25, yeah, February 25, 2017, and had a robust discussion about this in a special council meeting. You ended up approving the amended site plan in 2017 with the, the two-year bond for a sidewalk, if you recall. So that sidewalk was to be built on the north side of the project, and it was deferred until a later time with a bond in place. So the, the improvements that were made as part of that original site plan approval were the signage that were related to the project, the interior renovations. But none of the actual site improvements were made. Next slide, please. Oh, does it work? Great. Okay. So here are the existing conditions today. The existing service bays there on the north end of the building with an existing kind of add-to, add-on lean-to building there for their wash bay. And this is what it looks like on the right side on the interior. They have about eight service bays. And then, you can see on that top of the drawing is their wash bay. One of the concerns the planning commission had was how the existing discharge from the wash bay was being dealt with. And at this time, that discharge is just sheet flowing across the parking lot into the curb. There is a trench drain in the service bay, and you can kind of see that long rectangle in between the eight car stalls. That's what you see in the picture on the left, which is pumped up to a sump and then discharged into the sewer. So the discharge in the shop is being dealt with properly. The discharge from the service or from the wash bay is sheet floating out into the parking lot. In 17, they were thinking about, in addition to the interior upgrades and the signage, they were thinking about building a new service bay with a wash bay and a carport essentially on the east side. That was what you all approved on February 25, 2017. That did include a soil, sand and oil separator that would deal with that discharge from the new, the new improvements and run to 4450 to the north as it would appropriately. The new plan is similar to that. They do intend on building the same size service bay to the north. But this plan includes the installation of the sidewalk at this time. So there is no deferral of the sidewalk. It would be installed at this time. And it does have the appropriate onsite retention that would meet the requirements of the updated state and the local code for, for the percentage of retention. So those are some of the big changes. They've abandoned the east side carport. They've met the requirements of the onsite retention, and they are adding the necessary mechanical separator for the, for the stormwater discharge, or excuse me, sanitary sewer discharge. Here's some pictures about what that looks like from the building plans inside the building. You can see that there's two trench drains that will connect to the sand oil separator and then again flow to the north on 4450. If this plan is approved, this is what the new bay would look like. It would provide them with eight new service bays, two of which can be converted to wash bays. So that will take all of that wash discharge that's currently flowing across the parking lot into the curb and gutter. It will get it to flow into the trench drain, into the separator, and out to the sanitary sewer as it should. Here's a, just a small picture from the building plans that show the rendering of the building. It's a simple block building, which will be consistent with the north side of that dealership. It's a white painted block. And so as we went through our reviews, these are the codes and references that we make in our review. The planning commission did make a favorable recommendation to you, as do we as staff. And so we present that to you tonight and open for any questions.
Counselor Hanson?
Do we have any outstanding concerns from staff that haven't been addressed yet?
No.
I had a question. Is it a concrete sidewalk that we're planning on?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Yep.
And then, this is maybe more for Sean. How are we handling that UPDES violation? That the car wash is just going?
So it is actually going into another containment pond that they own.
Okay.
But it's after the curb and gutter.
Okay, so we're okay?
It should be okay. And then, we also have a treatment device of our own downstream of it before it goes to the river.
Oh, awesome. Thank you.
Just will correct it and take it off our plate.
That's great.
Do they have timing on when they were gonna start a project like this through the update?
Immediately. They're waiting for approval to get the contractor mobilized.
Okay, seeing Counselor Arnold.
Move to approve site plan amendment requested for the Wasatch Kia dealership, was stated within the packet.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that? I had a comment. You asked about when they're planning on doing it. I noticed back in 2017, we held a special meeting to get it approved. And I know our planning commission met in a special fifth Tuesday meeting to get this approved for them. So we do appreciate all the contrubuses due for Riverdale, and I hope they appreciate the reciprocation of trying to meet their schedules and helping them because we do a lot to try and help keep things moving forward. we do a lot to try and help keep things moving for this. So Ms. Marigoni, will you please poll the council?
Councillor Hanson? Yes.
Councillor Richter? Yes.
Councillor House?
Yes.
Councillor Arnold?
Yes.
Councillor Stevens?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. That passes unanimously. Thank you. We'll move on to item number two. Consideration of Resolution 2024-07, approving an amended development agreement between Riverdale City and GCH Riverdale One LLC is requested by Goldcrest Homes. Mr. Cooper.
Mayor, if I could just say something, just as a housekeeping matter, this is the one you should have a hard copy of a, of a resolution on there and it was also sent to you via email. Um, that's, you don't have a?
We did get an email, but.
It is an email. It's, it's, it's really the same one that you already had. We just cleaned it up. There were a couple of other things we found in there. We had already sent out an amended agenda to you. We didn't want to send a second one. So that's all it says. It doesn't change the content of it. It's still the same, but it is a cleaner version of that, uh, resolution. That's the one I would request that you pass when we came to it. I can actually.
Is the council okay with that? Or do you want to see a hard copy? Anybody? Or did you have a chance to review the one that we were emailed? Is everybody okay with that?
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Cooper.
Thank you. Um, and again, it's, uh, 2024-07 is the resolution before you tonight. Um, so again, this is a, a project that you have seen before. Uh, this is the, um, Motor View, uh, project, uh, now Coleman View Estates. And, um, it's, uh, been approved in substantial form, uh, in the last year. So you can see there that the planning commission recommended this to you, uh, in March of 23 and you all had discussion over a period of months about this, um, project and ultimately approved the subdivision, the site plan in August of, uh, 2023. And that is the approved subdivision there. That's in your packet, um, that, uh, lays out the 68 lots, um, and we'll talk about, uh, the changes that, uh, is now before you in terms of the development agreement, not necessarily any approval on the plat or the subdivision or the site plan. This is just the development agreement that was approved, uh, I believe in, um, looks like, um, May of 2023. And those changes are really reflected in four, uh, things. One, um, the project enhancements section, uh, residential design standards, water dedication, and just a few miscellaneous cleanup items. And I'll cover each one of those, uh, just briefly. Um, again, this is, um, you have both the original and the amended in your packet. And so if you've read those, um, you'll likely be able to pull out some of the changes, but I've highlighted them for you here. Uh, so in this first case of the change, this is under the, uh, 2.8.4, which is project enhancements in landscaping. There's a small change in the dog park area, uh, that changes it to a dog friendly, uh, area, uh, which is to help the HOA maintain the liability of having a confined, uh, dog park area, um, and just allows those dog friendly areas to be spread across the site. Uh, it does change the potential location for the two required courts. So in the, uh, original agreement, uh, they were called out as two pickleball courts. These are now just called out as two athletic courts, uh, which have two, uh, optional location to be, to be, uh, located by the HOA. And we do have representatives from Goldcrest Homes, uh, Joe Garlington at Thaddeus Falls here, uh, so they'll be able to answer any further questions. Uh, here's what that looks like in a side-by-side comparison. So on the left, you have the original, uh, at the top, um, with the green, that is the original dog park location. It was a confined area, um, set aside just for that dog park activities. That's been removed. And again, those dog friendly amenities have been, um, placed around the, the, um, the, the subdivision. Uh, at the bottom, it, uh, on the left side, you have the two approved location for pickleball courts. This proposed amendment still requires two athletic courts, but, um, in an alternate, uh, optional location to be decided upon by the HOA at a future date as things progress. Uh, that gives some flexibility to the site and to, um, to the residents to be able to have those in more convenient locations potentially. And then in the middle is a change that's not necessarily reflected in the language of the amendment, but it is reflected in the exhibit under the landscaping elements. You can see on the left, um, there was a, an approved trail, four-foot concrete sidewalk trail through the, uh, retention pond. Um, that really is an unusable amenity if the pond was to serve its purpose and fill up and, and retain water. And so they've done a good job, um, circulating that trail around the pond at the surface level, uh, so it's usable no matter what the condition of the pond is. Uh, in further changes to the landscape, they're proposing a 20% reduction in the landscape material. You can see the, the, uh, the types of material on the left there, the original approved amounts of about 221, uh, plant units. So those are quantities. And then, um, the amended agreement has about a 20% reduction to 178 as well as a reduction in sod, um, an increase in the revegetation seed and, uh, and a, uh, reduction in some of the, um, gravel mulch, uh, material. And so this is consistent with the, uh, other requests of the water reduction, which I'll get to in a minute. Um, the third request is to change the language related to our residential design, design standards and the use of masonry on an exterior, uh, part of the home. Um, 40% of the entire exterior is a little abnormal, um, given that, uh, unless you have an all, uh, masonry home, like an all brick home or something like that, it's not typical to have masonry products on the sides and the rear. Um, and so we looked at some language that could help with that to where 40% of the, um, masonry products are required on all street-facing sides. So that would be the front of the building, um, on, on a typical street. And if it's a corner, it would be the sides and the front of the building. And those masonry, uh, materials are restricted to, um, cementitious, uh, siding, so hardy siding type of things, obviously brick, uh, stone, those kind of things. It would not include stucco, uh, so that would, that would remain. And, uh, these are some photos of what, um, is being proposed on the Goldcrest Homes, uh, website right now. If you go to the Riverdale section of their website, so these are some of the homes that they have. Uh, these are all renderings. There's a disclaimer on their site that these are, these possibly could be subject to change, but you can see what they're thinking at least, and they can speak more to this, um, in terms of the application of that 40% and what some of the style of homes might be. So I'll just, uh, cruise through these. And again, those are, uh, conceptual only. Uh, there are some changes to the onsite improvement, uh, section where there was a ditch, um, to be, uh, buried and that originally was not, um, tied to any phase, uh, it was tied to phase three and the amended language actually ties it to phase two. Uh, so that helps, uh, bring that to an earlier phase. Um, and then lastly is, uh, what was mentioned, I believe, earlier in the work session, which is the water reduction from, um, the 68, uh, point six-two down almost by half to 39.12. And this is in keeping both with our ordinance, with what the state, um, is urging folks to do as well as the reduction in the, the onsite landscaping. And then there's just a few minor changes where they've added some more binding language that, where this project, um, runs with the land. So that, uh, I speak, I think speaks to the question about, um, what happens if there are other parties that come in that might do development on this site? This, uh, would be a binding upon them. Uh, I wanted to include this, um, just for information only. This is not part of the development agreement amendment proposal that you're considering tonight, but it is information that I think is important. Um, they have given us a phasing plan. This phasing map was, uh, provided in the original approvals, but now they've added some dates. And so these are dates that are subject to, um, their business processes, but I was, I asked them to try to nail down as best they could how things are moving along. So you can see phase one there, um, is actually starting now. Uh, they've, they've done a pre-construction meeting for demolition. They're looking to do a pre-construction meeting for the horizontal improvements as quickly as they can get, um, things put together for that. So that looks to be, uh, fairly soon and into, um, September, October for the horizontal improvements. Uh, phase two, um, they're looking to do that concurrent. So phase one and phase two would happen together and then phase three would happen at a later date in 2025. Uh, in the work session, it was mentioned that there is a third party looking to potentially buy lots here, but that's something that the developer hasn't entirely worked out. So they're not ready, uh, at this time to tell us which lots those are and which lots will be retained by them. But, uh, uh, just know that that's part of their planning process. And so as we've looked at these and looked at the original intent of the development agreement and the changes that they're proposing, we feel like these changes, um, reflect the original, uh, purpose and intent of the approval. And so we recommend, uh, that you consider that for approval tonight.
Questions? I, I had just a procedural question. So we approved it in August of 23. Uh, do I understand that right? That if they have not started by August of 24, they have to come back in for a new approval? Is it one year?
It's one year with, uh, request to the planning commission for a six-month extension.
Okay. Okay. Councillor Arnold.
Um, is the demolition going to go in phases as well? Or are you going to clean up the whole site with the trees and asphalt and all that kind of stuff?
Yes.
Let's, let's have you come on up to the microphone and, uh, just state your name and then we'll have you answer. It's, uh, much easier for the people online.
Yeah, of course. No problem. Uh, Joe Garlington with Goldcrest Homes. Um, yes, that's in one phase. So we're handling all of the demolition, uh, at this time. Yeah.
I had another question. Are you still trying to find someone to take the screens?
Uh, if you'd like a screen, yep, we can have that delivered.
I know that in a meeting, they were like, if, if you could find somewhere for the screens to go, um, they were seriously looking for someone to take the screens. So I don't know why anyone would want one, but you never know.
Yeah, at this point, they'll go to recycling unless somebody else wants one.
Okay.
Help with the demolition.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Garlington? Uh, councillor Arnold, thank you.
Move to approve resolution 2024-7, as stated within the packet.
Okay. And that is the amended resolution that we received, right? Okay. We have a motion.
Second.
We have a second. Any discussion on that? Ms. Marigoni, will you please poll the council?
Councillor House?
Yes.
Councillor Richter?
Yes.
Councillor Stevens?
Right.
Yes.
Uh, councillor Hanson? Yes. Councillor Arnold?
Yes.
All right, that passes unanimously. So thank you for coming in tonight. We're excited to see that project start moving. Yeah. Uh, item number three, consideration of Resolution 2024-08, awarding a bid for the 2024 roadway chip seal project in an amount not to exceed $443,743.64. Mr. Douglas.
Thank you, Mayor. So just a pretty standard procedure. Um, we'll be chipping them areas. We've crack sealed them or we're in the process of crack sealing them. We'll put a chip seal down with fog coat over them. We have worked with this company before and have pretty good results in the past. So I feel comfortable they'll do us a decent job. So answer any questions if you have them.
Okay, any questions? Councillor Arnold.
Move to approve resolution 2024-08, awarding a bid for the 2024 roadway chip seal project in the amount not to exceed $443,743.64.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Ms. Marigoni, will you please poll the council?
Councillor Stevens?
Yes.
Councillor Hanson? Yes. Councillor Arnold?
Yes.
Councillor Richter?
Yes. Councillor House? Yes.
All right, very good. That passes unanimously. We will move on to item number four, consideration of Resolution 2024-09, authorizing the continuation of the pickup contribution for public safety and firefighter tier-two employee retirement contributions to the Utah require, uh, retirement system and a contribution to a 401K for the non-public safety firefighter tier-two participants. Mr. Garden.
Okay, so originally in 2020, um, when tier-two was originally created, the URS or whoever said that they didn't think there would ever be a time that the contribution amount would exceed what was allowable for. However, that happened in 2020 for public safety. And so the city was left with the option of either making basically the employee make that contribution or the city was allowed to pick up that contribution. So we brought a resolution to you guys, uh, to the council at that time, presented it and said, just so you know, if you agree to do this, it's binding, um, and you'll have to pick that up for the foreseeable future. Like that will be a pickup. Um, so now, and that was about 2.27%. It went up to 2.59%. So now for, starting, um, July 1st, the anticipated amount is 4.73%. So URS has come to everybody and said, hey, even though you did a resolution, we want a resolution that says the 4.73% in it. So that's what we've brought to you tonight is basically that same resolution, just tweaking it to have that verbiage. So if the council was to approve this, um, we would be bound to pick up that 4.73% for the foreseeable future for tho, for those public safety employees, even for, um, the regular employees this year. Um, that contribution limit has been exceeded there. Contribution is 0.7%. However, they didn't amend it in state law and allow us to pick that up. But how the resolution's written, it kind of covers those regular tier-two employees too. Um, councillor Hanson had asked approximately what the cost was associated with this, the increase from the, because we're bound to do the 2.59 under those previous resolutions. The increase would be about 62% or 62,000 this year. However, it depends upon like the employee mix. Like if we had an employee leave and we hired a tier-one, then that would change. But that's approximately what it would be as of today.
Any other questions that I can answer?
Councillor Hanson.
Is this already built into the tentative budget?
It is.
Okay.
And if you have concerns about it and you want to see it more in the budget, we can wait. If you want to, um, see the budget first, it's totally up to you guys.
Councillor Hawes.
Um, when you say that, that it's binding for the foreseeable future, does that mean that the, the, the 4.73% is binding in the, into the future as long as, until we change it?
We wouldn't be able to reduce it. So if something changed with tier-two, then like if they changed that matrix or something, then it could change, but the city would be committed to that 4.73%.
What if the contribution rate went down?
Then we wouldn't have to contribute up to the 4.73. That's kind of the max. So if it went up to like six, we would be ba, more than likely, we're going to be back here and saying like, hey, we need a new resolution. If you guys want to pick up the contribution to six. If next year it dropped back down to like the 2.59, then it would just be the 2.59. That's the maximum. Sorry, I didn't explain that.
The other question that I have, and this is a, a, probably a bigger, um, question that I have as an actuary, as, and that is, uh, when we're looking at this and saying that we're going to pick, we're going to contribute this for, um, for all the employees, um, there, I mean, the defined contribution has different requirements for, um, the different types of benefits that will be earned. And, um, one of the things that was, I think, added was the, the, uh, contribution rates for the entire, um, thing that shows what the rates are for, um, for public employees as well as public safety. And the thing that I would point out is that the total contribution varies significantly between the public employees and the public safety employees. And so when, when you say you want to be fair to the employees and contribute this much to the public employees piece, because you're contributing it to the, um, public safety employees, you're already not being fair. Because we're contributing a total of 31.22% for public safety and we're contributing, um, 15.89% for public employees or, um, or 1765, one of the two. But I mean, there, that's a huge difference already.
For sure. And that's where like we were trying to include all, and it's not all employees, it's just the tier-two employees.
And so the reason where that's a pickup, like of an extra contribution, that's where originally in twenty-twenty, when we included that, we felt like, to be fair to all the tier-two employees, we really needed to include everybody. And, and there's even differences. Like, if you look, all the public safety employees don't fall in the same category, like the fireman's retirement's different. Their contribution amount with the four-point-seven-three is one-eight-point-eight-one, and it's lower because of some insurance rebates and proceeds and things that come back. So you're right, they're all different. We just felt like if we're gonna pick it up and pay even more for some of the like public safety employees, we should try and be fair and do it to the other employees as well. So.
Bart, you're not on mute. Okay, I just, you know, I.
Yeah, it's never gonna be like apples to apples. And the reason we did it for the tier-two is because like their benefits significantly less than the tier-ones. And so, and there's different contribution rates there with the tier-ones, too. And so originally, when we did it, we included all the tier-two employees.
Is, is there, I mean, what's the difference between the public employee and the public safety benefits?
It's, so it depends on.
Tier-two.
For tier-two, so in general, you receive one and a half percent per year for every year of service. You, as a public employee, you receive one and a half percent of your salary per year of service. You have to serve thirty-five years. As a police officer, you receive two percent per year, or it's two and a half percent, I can't remember, for twenty-five years. And then you can retire, and then it drops down after that. So they can retire a lot faster, and they get a higher contribution rate.
Yeah, and.
And the fire's the same as the police.
And the, the expectation is that police and fire are harder on you, and you don't normally stick around for thirty, forty years as an employee, earning those retirement benefits. And the stress, the, and I can understand, you know, with what we've seen in the news this week, the stress of being, you know, a public safety person is harder on you. And so they give them the option of retiring early. And to do that, you have to, the, the ultimate benefit is, I believe, ends up being slightly less than what the, what the public employee earns over thirty years, thirty or thirty-five years. And so it, it just seems to me that, that adding the four-point-three, the four-point-seven-three percent, the excess to the regular employees is, is being overly generous to those employees.
Well, and I would say, like, I would argue that if you're gonna say that, then you shouldn't probably even pay the four-point-seven-three for the public safety, because like that's over and above the retired contribution. So if we're only gonna pay the contribution, then why wouldn't we do this, just do the same? And even now, if you look at that, like the public employees, the same thing has occurred. However, we can't pick up that election, and it's over that point-seven percent. So we're already not.
And because, because we can't do that, I wouldn't have a problem making the, the the rate that we gave to the regular, to the public employees to be the point-seven percent, the amount that they now have to contribute.
Yeah, and all we are trying to do is you're paying more than you have to. So if you're gonna pay it more than you have to for some of the employees, trying to be more fair, because there's already a reduced benefit there, that's why we have proposed it the way that we did, and that's why the council approved it the way that they did in twenty-twenty.
Yeah, I, I don't agree with it, but that's only because I probably understand it a little better. I understand the math and the way it works and all of the other aspects of how it's, how fairness works in terms of, of of actuarial calculations. In, if there's, there's a saying among the actuaries that says, "The fair comes every fall." Life isn't fair. Actuarial calculations are not fair. If you're trying to be fair, then you do the actuarial calculations, you know. There, there are ways to be fair, but the fair, you know, you, you can't just give everybody the same and say that's fair.
Yeah, and I would agree with you to some extent. However, like, all this is based upon assumptions, because for a tier-one employee, a policeman can retire at twenty, and they went to twenty-five. So you made an assumption, or an actuary made an assumption there, you know, without any, like, okay, so stress is reduced for employees, and I'd say that it's the exact opposite.
Yeah, there was, the, the real big reason why it was changed was because of interest rates.
And one, yeah, and trying to get the contribution rate down and those kind of things. And there's all sorts of unfair things in this, because like the, the tier-two relay rates, a lot of that doesn't go to a tier-two employee, it goes to a tier-one employee and things. So, so to say that you're trying to make it, like, yeah, so, you know, like, we're just trying to equalize it across the board. If we're gonna pay extra money on behalf of one tier-two employee, then we should probably do it on behalf of the others, is, is where we looked at it in twenty-twenty, and the council agreed at that time.
If we were gonna make an extra contribution above the point-seven, so that we're still providing more, but in the future value, like you were saying, because they work longer, what would you suggest, rather than the four-point-seven-three?
Well, I would suggest just the point-seven, because that's being fair. We're taking away the, the excess that, that they're having to.
Pay themselves.
Reduce out of their wages. I mean, it, yeah, the, one of the issues here is that because of the way that the URS was allowed to do, we can contribute to the public safety, we can, we can pay the public safety people's contribution through the pickup. We can't do that through the, for the regular employees. So all of the regular employees are gonna get a point-seven percent reduction in pay.
And they're actually gonna get more than that if you take that out, because they're getting that two-point-five-nine now.
Yeah.
And so you're gonna, you're gonna, you know, like, impact the employees more than that if you do that.
Because you're saying if we don't do this updated ordinance, what we had already said we would pick up, they would lose the two-point-five-nine?
So for the public safety employees, you cannot change it.
Okay.
You have to pay the two-point-five-nine for the public safety.
But not for.
But not the other ones, but you're paying that now. So if you stop paying it, it's gonna be a reduction. So you're gonna give the public safety more, and you're gonna take away from all the other tier-two employees. It's gonna be a reduction of benefits, and they're already getting a reduction by the point-seven. So you're gonna make it more unfair if, if you do, were to do that. So.
I, I would argue that you made it more unfair when you started. That you made it more unfair to the public employees versus the public safety employees.
I guess it depends how you look at it, because if you're a public employee, like, you have to work longer, you get a reduced benefit. So you're already getting.
You don't have to worry about getting shot.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, it's, it's a lot safer job that.
Yeah, and we can argue all day, because like historically, I think there's been more public works employees who have died on the job than public safety. So, but like, yeah, we can go around the line. Like, at the end of the day, like, it's just, we're just bringing this resolution, and like, we're looking at it, if you were paying extra for a tier-two employee, we should probably pay extra for all tier-two employees. But it's up to you guys. We're stuck at the two-point-five-nine for the public safety, and it's what you guys would like to do.
Counsel Arnold.
Just clarification, tier-one, tier-two, what's the difference?
So the legislature decided that they wanted to try and reduce the rates. I believe if you go back and really read it, URS was not in favor of it, because from an actuarial standpoint, it stopped funding like the tier-one. So they, the legislature drew a line in the sand, and I believe it was Jan, or July first of either twenty-eleven or twenty-twelve. So any employee who was employed prior to that time is a tier-one employee. Anybody who is employed after that time is a tier-two employee. And so in all reality, you could have started work a day later, and then you received a significant decrease benefit.
Yeah, the, the, and this was actually, tier-two was actually a compromise, because the initial legislation that was proposed would have only offered a defined contribution, not a defined benefit. Defined benefit is the, is your, your pension, as opposed to a defined contribution, which is your 401K, where at the time you retire, whatever you have, you go out and buy your pension. Whereas with the defined contrib, defined benefit, the benefit that you get is defined by how long you worked and what your salary was at the end of the thing. It doesn't matter how much was ever contributed to your, to your retirement account, per se. So. And, and Utah has been very good as far as funding. If you go, because retirement benefits have always been one of those things which companies and governments put out there. You know, they would just give it, and give it, and give it, because it didn't necessarily cost a lot now to give something thirty years from now. And now we're, you know, thirty years later, and all of, and there's all these government and government retirement funds that are coming up and finding that they are very, very underfunded. And the, the, let, the, the Congress required companies that did these to have them funded. They required that they can make contributions to make sure that they're always fully funded. They did not ever put that onto the government-sponsored plans. And so there are a lot, if, if you look at the east, back east, there's a lot of pension plans in the east that are just horribly underfunded. And one day it's gonna come due. Utah has, has done a very good job, but when interest rates came down so much, it made the benefit that was being promised under the tier-one become extremely, extremely expensive, because you weren't going to be able to earn as much interest over the time that the person worked. And so they said, well, instead of continuing to increase our, our contributions, we're going to reduce the benefits. You have to work thirty-five years now instead of thirty to get a hundred percent of the benefit that you used to only have to work thirty-four. So.
And it's even a reduced benefit. It's not the same benefit at thirty-five years.
It was, at thirty years, it used to be two.
It used to be sixty percent, and now it's like fifty. So not only do you have to work longer, but it's a reduced benefit. And they went back and fixed public safety. It's a better benefit, but they've never done anything for the, for the regular public employees.
Counsel Arnold.
I, I too have a problem with this. I didn't do the math to that level, but we keep talking about increasing benefits, and we keep talking about the shelf. I mean, you probably figured I was gonna say something about this, but it's like, we're not doing anything on the other side of this. We always talk about doing less with more. We got two firefighter positions that are still, three firefighter positions that are out there. If we have money, how come we're not raising the rates on the positions that were, to pay them the actual amount? And the, and the retirement for municipal government, Riverdale City, is phenomenal. Like, the, so when the public safety started going up, that whole seventeen percent or whatever it is started going up, the public employees went with it. And then they finally said, whoa, 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 we can't do this. So they stopped the public employees, but the state mandated this, the public safety employees. So the, the seventeen percent or something like that for the public employees is far greater than, I, I don't know about the county government or whatever.
And tier-one.
Tier-one. But, but it, it's crazy. It, it's crazy good. And, you know, even, even adding this on a, the 401K match is above that. And, and I'm, I'm like, what are we doing with the budget? You know, we talked about in our meetings that this council is the one that's laying the, the foundation for the twenty-thirty. And, you know, it's like, okay, what is the number? And I know it's a percentage, but if we could quantify that, how much do we lose in twenty-thirty? Beyond that, I was just texting the mayor today, and I'm like, you know, how, how does this stuff get on the agenda without going through a committee of him, with him first? And, because I don't understand it. It's just like, hey, we want to, we want to take our pay up, and it's great. And it's like, okay, with the budget that we have, we don't have any revenue coming in, but we're gonna take the, the benefits up. And when I, and, and I use their first names on purpose, but when I'm with Ann Milner, I call her Ann. When I'm with Cal Musselman, I call him Cal. And when I'm with Katie Hall, I call her Katie. But when they talk about Riverdale, I have nothing. I, we, we talked about the crime along Riverdale Road of what we could show them, that we could actually say, this is what the state does to us? We love Riverdale. We love, I love Riverdale Road. I love everything about Riverdale, honestly. But it's like, when I talk to our elected representatives that are saying, we're not, we're not giving you that. We're not doing anything to help you. You guys gotta help yourselves. I have nothing to give them. Hypotheticals, kind of. We talked about, hey, get into Riverdale, we'll show you. Come for a tour, we'll show you. But like, we need, like, hard documentation. And, you know, I see the shelf, the cliff that we've been talking about for years and years, and it's like, we come in before a budget, and it's like, we're taking more out for a benefit, because, and, and I too, I'm not, didn't dig the word fair in the packet, because we're just doing this to make it fair. And then the first thing I did is I pulled up the, the employment for Riverdale, and saw the firefighter thing's still on there. And it, it's like, why can't we get firefighters? And I'm assuming it's because of pay. The, I don't even know what to call him. Casey, what's his last name?
Warren.
Chief Warren, yeah. He's been Casey for so long, I can't go to the chief Warren. You know, he, he talks about how he gets into it with North Ogden, and you were talking about North Ogden, and we took an officer from North Ogden, and, you know, we, we paid him more, but we didn't have a building that they did. And at what point do we balance our budget, pay the people we need to pay them? Because I think, and I don't know, Chief Shali, if, if there was more per hour, as opposed to, you know, there, what was it, eighty-six thousand dollars on the last one that's tabled, it's just tabled, and sixty-seven thousand dollars on this one, that really, nobody really sees. When they, when they apply for the job, they see the twenty bucks an hour or whatever it is. And, and it's like, why are we not attacking that? Instead of all this, you know, under-the-table benefit stuff, and I get it, because it means something, but not as much as when you look at a job and you say, I'm getting this much per hour. And I just, it's like, if we have the money, let's put it to where we see it. Not, you know, oh, we just want to make it fair, you know, because I too am on a thirty-five-year, forty-year plan, you know? I mean, I, I, I don't get anything near what the city gives, you know, with the federal government. But I, I just think it's just, we gotta get busy. At, at some point, we gotta really get busy in what we're, we're sharpening the pencil and saying, what are we doing with this thing? Because I don't get it. I, I read the packet and I just get confused, because it doesn't match the, the, the future. You know, we're talking about closing the senior center one minute, because it's unsustainable. We do something and say, oh, this is how we make it sustainable. Okay. Okay, great, that's hard numbers, that's wonderful. But we don't have any hard numbers anywhere else, but we just keep coming with this stuff and we're cutting services, right? I mean, we're cutting the ambulance um because it doesn't pencil out. It's like, what are we doing?
And you realize, we survey all the wages the same. So like the firemen's wages, they're just as competitive as the police wages. Because we do a survey, the exact same as every other position in the city. So like if we're not paying enough, it's because the other positions aren't paying enough either. And like, we've always said, like, our surveys are a year behind. And actually, in a lot of ways, and I don't know if Chief Shali would agree, um, I've talked to um Chief Brinkman about it. I don't know if Chief Warren feels the same way, but this is actually a retention and recruitment tool for them, for the public safety. Because not all um entities pick up these elections. Um, but, and we'll talk some more about it in the budget and where we're at and those kind of things. The problem with a lot of it is, it is just hypotheticals. There's no hard numbers because we don't know what the economy is gonna be like in twenty thirty. We don't know what legislative changes are gonna take place and, and all of that.
You can, you can tell me what twenty twenty three was.
I can.
If we took that.
And I've got it in my presentation to show you in a few minutes, so.
I would make a motion to table this. We can untable it right after this, right? Or do, or do we even have to table it? Can we just put it on the backside of the agenda?
Like to deal with tonight or?
Yeah, if we just, if we just said, we wanna go through the budget like we talked about.
We can do that.
So we don't need to table.
Want to bring it up later, no.
Up to, you guys okay with that or?
I did wanna make a counterpoint before I forget it though, if that's alright.
Counsel Hanson.
You can just make a point, it doesn't have to be a counterpoint.
It's a counterpoint and it's probably because I was, I have always been in my career, a public employee. I am lucky that I'm tier one, I'll admit that. But um, it is kind of what Cody was saying. Yeah, you're not seeing it on the filling position side, but what's more important than that is retaining our institutional knowledge and the people that we have. And for public safety to take a hit of four point seven three percent, you know, that's, that's substantial. For our regular employees to take a hit, even a point seven that they weren't planning on? That's, that's significant in this current economy. It really is. If that was happening to me, luckily it's not. I know it's happening to other people at the county that I work at. They're not prepared for it. They don't even know that it's coming because they weren't part of the legislative season. And so there is a lot more to it than just the upfront, we have unfilled positions. Because that is true, like trying to fill the positions and then them finding out when they get their first paycheck, that they moved from this agency to that agency. And now all of a sudden, they're losing almost five percent of their paycheck. That's a pretty big hit. And they're not gonna like that when it's slipped in after the fact. But for our current existing employees who do know what their paychecks are and what the contributions are and what we've done in the past, that's a big hit. Like, how does that show that we're supportive of our employees and want to keep them moving forward? And for such a comparatively small amount, you know, especially if we did just the point seven, that's gonna reduce the number from the sixty seven. And then, you know, cover that part so the contribution doesn't take a hit on their paychecks. I mean, that's a lot of goodwill to try to keep the people that are keeping our city afloat. So we don't have more empty positions.
Even on the table? I know, I know Counsel Haas said it, but I mean, it's not part of the.
My, my suggestion would have been to change the, the amount that the regular public employees get to stick with the point, two, two point five nine. I would even be willing to, to kick in the extra point seven that they have to pay and we can't.
And that's what I'm saying.
So, and, and then give the um, give the four point seven three to the um, public, to the public cert, their uh, public safety, yeah.
I'm just saying there is some benefit to that, even though it may not be visible to people from the outside, it's visible to the people on the inside and to the new people who get their first paycheck that, you know, that may be a shock to them, but, and that there's value in it. And I agree with you, we probably do need to look at salaries if we do have these positions sitting open. Um, and like Cody said, hopefully we'll get into that in the budget, but, you know, I would be in favor with what's, what um Stacy said, sorry. That, you know, we cover those unexpected contributions, even if it is a slightly less for the rest of the employees. But at least they're not seeing a negative impact on their paychecks. But I'm okay to table until after. I just didn't want to forget that.
Any other comments?
Come here. Can I ask anybody add something?
Yeah, you bet. Go ahead, Chief Warren.
So I apologize, that's a good person. Um, the, at the contribution for the tier two employees for police officers, the environment is, you have to have it, it's essential. Um, I just wanted to add that because a lot of these other agencies with their two and two guys, they're taking up the four point seven percent. And they're actually adding money into the four oh one Ks of these police officers to, to basically equalize with the tier one police officers. So if we did do that for our public safety, we, we're already behind as it is because, you know, it was great that we, we picked up that contribution. But a lot of other departments are actually putting money to our four oh one K on top of that to match the tier one guys. And so we're already likely behind. As far as like the penny goals and stuff, I know we'll be like a minute. But uh, this has been the, I've been twenty years, I've been part of every hiring board for the last eighteen years uh for the Riverdale Police Department. And these last helpful positions have been the hardest, hardest hiring process I've ever had. You know, we, and we're talking about more Ogden. Yeah, we, we get a little bit more paid than them, but we're substantially behind, we're behind South Ogden, we're behind Roy, we're behind. That we're gonna be selling, uh Ogden City is just right, right, right with us, right depending at this point. So we're just not getting candidates from other agencies because we are so far behind. Um, and not just in pay, but in all these benefits that we're talking about. So if we were to not do this, it would just, it would kill our department.
My two cents.
Sure, go ahead. We're, you know, we've been in this hiring process since December when Paul got put in there. And we've had, the problem I think we're having too is there's a little instability in Riverdale, in the fire world. There's a lot of rumors, there's a lot of conversations. No one knows where the fire department's going in Riverdale right now. You know, we're talking about getting rid of the ambulance, we're talking about going to a fire district. People are a little apprehensive to jump on board with that and with our staffing issues and us shutting down our ambulance. I think there's a little instability there and Casey's right, we're still behind. We're not ahead of the curve. And we're talking with Stacy, she's saying we're a year behind still. So I know, one of the benefits is that we reevaluate it, but the way I understand it from Stacy is we still stay about a year behind. So that's kind of where we're at. We can no longer pull people from other departments because they don't want to walk away from a job even as thirty cents an hour. It used to be four or five dollars an hour. Now we're talking thirty cents an hour to walk away from a job that has your, your benefits there, your seniority, all those things. And because of our staffing levels, we have to bring in people who have more experience than other fire departments. I can't pull somebody from a fire academy and put them on a fire truck day one. There's just no way we can do that the way our staffing is right now. So we're kind of in this other mix of a little bit of instability and people talking about that instability until we kind of settle some of that, I think my hiring issue is gonna continue. So that's my two cents.
Good, Chief.
Can I say something here too? Because I've kind of been biting my lip a little bit. It, it, it's pretty complicated and I guess that's where it's frustrating to me for the last two or three and a half years that I've been sitting in here. Everything we have done has been an attempt to try and save Riverdale money. So these consolidations of, of positions, when, when people leave, we have not filled them. And we purposely done that, trying to save Riverdale money. So Alan, when you say that we're, we're not sharpening the pencil, that's all we've done. We're trying to save the senior center. I can look at three people in this room right now that are wearing multiple hats, that if you went to these other cities and said, what's your finance director do? He does finances and nothing else. Ours does finance and he does I T. So we could hire another I T guy, but we keep consolidating these positions. Ask what their city manager does. Their city manager does city managing and administration. He doesn't do the legal work. There's another hundred plus thousand dollars that we're saving right there. My, my rec director out there is wearing not only his rec director hat, but he's also running an apartment building and a senior center. My, my city recorder is wearing about fourteen different hats. We could fill all those positions, but we don't. We're assuming these responsibilities ourselves because we want this to continue to work. We're trying to work with the city. So to say that we're not sharpening the pencil is just not true. We're doing anything and everything we can. The whole thing with the fire department, when Randy left, we tried to eliminate those full-time positions and get part, part-time positions just so we can get the job done, but we're not paying benefits. We're trying to save money anywhere and everywhere we can. That's everything we have done. And that includes the fire department. We're, we're looking at it and we say, okay, if my fire department goes out on an ambulance call, then I'm shorthanded. So it, it's, it's not an easy balance there. It's very frustrating, like where's that number that works? And so do we want to get rid of the ambulance? No, but if, if they're leaving the city and I'm shorthanded, it's not only putting them in danger, but it puts the city in danger because I don't have a full fire crew here. So we have to make a decision. Do we fight fires or do we do ambulances? Do we have heavy rescue? I mean, these are not easy there. It's just not black and white, simple answers here. We're trying to do the best we can and we're sharpening the pencil anywhere and everywhere we can. So it's very frustrating when things are said like that because um, I mean, we are saving money. And any of those cities that are telling you that kind of stuff, have them come here. Have them come here and talk to our people who are wearing these multiple hats and then say that we're not, we're not sharpening pencils. I mean, that's all we do. And so I, it's not easy and, and I recognize this. I know these benefits are important because when we've said this the last couple of meetings, when we've had these people coming in, that's what they're asking us about. It's not wages as much as it is these benefits. And they're little, but they're a big deal to them. That might be the selling point to get somebody from South Ogden or North Ogden or whatever we have to do. So I know it's frustrating to you guys. Uh, we're not, and Cody's gonna talk about this tonight, we're, we're not at the cliff's edge. I mean, we're doing fine financially right now. These things we can add in, but we don't know where we're gonna be in twenty thirty. And we've been telling you all this for a while and, and some of this whole process is just a mindset. We've just been trying to get you to think, it's not the Riverdale of twenty years ago, where we could go out and hire all those positions and, and add all these benefits and stuff like that in. So we have to be very selective when we're doing this. But um, I don't think we're doing anything wrong. We're doing everything we can possibly do at this point, just to try and save our people and save our wages. I think if you ask us all, we love the, the system that we use. Yeah, it's a year behind and, and we're gonna be behind the people, but um, everybody copies us in, in wages for the most part. Now Stacy hands those things out pretty much every year and they're basing that off of us and it's because of the scale that you guys chose. So I think if we had to pick and choose between benefits and salary, yeah, we want to stay on that salary thing because we're consistently staying with everybody else. But everybody's going up and it's getting expensive for all of us. And so I know it's frustrating for you guys, but it's frustrating for us. We're doing everything we can to keep these costs low. So when we come in and ask for these benefits and stuff, I know it's an expense, but it's still something that we need. If we don't have this, we are not gonna get, it's not gonna matter if it's police or fire, we'll start losing everybody. So I mean, at some point in time, that is a cost of doing business.
Counsel Arnold.
I, I totally get all that. And don't take me saying sharpen the pencil, you know, so literal that I'm saying, I wanna see it. As, as being on the council, so this is my thirteenth year or something like that, I'm in that mindset. You guys, you guys have beat that into my head. But I'm not seeing it, other than you, you say this, but like somebody, somebody leaves, that position isn't uh filled. Somebody gets those duties, they get a little bump. The year over year on the, the salary, it's still up. So somebody leaves, we don't go down, we go up. We had eight percent increase last, last year. Huge, massive compared to anywhere that I've, I've tried to research all over the place to find out where you would get eight percent. Riverdale is the only place that I've found that got eight percent. We, we come in here as council people twice a month, we read the packet, we get into the mindset and it's like, you do this every day. What I'm saying is you need to educate me because just the way the system works, I make a decision, one, one of five make a decision. Educate me. Give me tools to educate those that I run into, when I'm talking about our, our elected officials. Don't just bop in with, oh, we need to be better, better insurance, we need to have better retirement pay. Um, we need more money. This is the money we need to hire two officers, these police or the firefighters. Uh, I don't know if the code guy was on there, but the, and the fire marshal, this is the money we need for that. We gave it to you, franchise fees, property taxes that go directly to me and my neighbors to give these things. And then all of a sudden, we're like, oh, we don't have enough money to do that. The part-time fire department, uh, building or fire inspector, is that I'm saying that right? I need to calm down. Riverdale city truck for a part-time employee sits on Ritter Drive. He's part-time and he's got a truck that he takes to his house. I think that's an excess. I, I have vehicles that I have access to at my work, that I drive to work every day. And I can check them out and go do what I need to do. But it's like, I, I see excess like that, that bugs me. You know, when it's like, he's got so many cars, he can't put them in his driveway, so he leaves it on Ritter Drive for the weekend. And it's like, I drive by it every day, people are saying, what's the Riverdale truck just sitting there for? Uh, and I don't tell the ones that don't need to know. But everything that I'm asking for is just to be educated. Like where are we going and why? And the only education I get is when I bring up my packet and it says, yeah, we wanna put another eighty thousand dollars a year on, you know, benefits and sixty seven thousand dollars a year in benefits. And I'm like, what the heck? Where's this coming from? Because I'm not getting it and with the federal government and, and I work for the federal government. It's probably the biggest socialist program on the planet, you know? And it's just like, where are we going? I, I want, when I go to bed, I, I want a fire department. You know, I want a police department. I want them staffed, I want bullets and water and all that kind of stuff because I don't even want to think about it. I want you guys here. I mean, I value everything that you guys do for us, but we've got to figure out how to move forward without uh saying, well, God, South Ogden does it. How does South Ogden do it? You know, how does Roy do it? How do they have these things? So I mean, I, I am definitely not attacking you because I want to be on your team, but I gotta know what's going on. So when they say, when Michelle says, Counsel Arnold, how do you vote? And I say yes or no, I, I want to know what the heck I'm talking about without saying, oh, we, we have this big pot of money, you know? I mean, hundred thousand dollars for furniture that is constantly being brought up as a, almost a joke now. And it's like, do we have a hundred thousand dollars for furniture? And I mean, because I'm, I am whipped into mindset, like you said, you know, it's like. Yeah, sorry, cut me off.
This is a really good transition into the budget agenda.
I agree.
But I just, I know this is a super overgeneralization and you won't like it. And maybe Stacy won't like it, or maybe I don't even like it. We're working really hard to be cautious and the staff has worked really hard since all of this started in two thousand and five to find, to work us to this point. And we still have twenty thirty ahead of us and we have to be cautious. We have to have that mindset, you have that mindset. But from what I've seen in the numbers, and even though we don't talk about it super clearly, we've had, we've had excess money at the end of every budget year since two thousand and five. We've been saving as much as we can save. We've been moving even a little bit more maybe into our capital improvements so we can hang on to it. Right now, on your last updated year to date on the hold harmless, we are getting about one point four, almost one point five million year to date in sales tax. Don't you feel like we're still in a safety zone right now where our excess is exceeding that right now? It doesn't mean it will clear till twenty thirty, that's why we have to be careful. But as of this minute, we're putting maybe over two million dollars aside to save it to prepare for twenty thirty. And so when we lose one point five million, even though it'll be hard to not have that safety net, we're gonna make it right now. We don't know what will happen in the future, but just to put us all a little bit of ease as we approach the budget and the employee benefits, we're okay technically right now and into the foreseeable future.
Cody's gonna address that tonight. That's, that's in your packet, all that stuff that talks about that. And, and the projections are actually even a little bit higher, but, and we're projecting that debt to be a little bit. And projections are actually even a little bit higher, but and we're projecting that debt to be a little bit higher by 2030. Um, but I want to address a couple of things too, Alan, and I'm not attacking you. I'm just trying to defend our position here. The system that we have, um, it's, I guess what's frustrating to us is when you attack us for the nine percent or the eight percent or everything. It's not like we're doing that. It's the system that you guys have approved and adopted. Those surveys are every other city out there. So it's, you're going to see another big one this year. And so I'm just telling you that as we get in here because I'm sure you'll ask Cody and he's going to be nervous telling you that. But it's based upon what other cities are doing. So when they're going up, we're going to go up because that's how we're competing with people. So that's not uncommon. It's, it's just going to happen. But in a way that's good too, because then our firefighters are making what other fire department guys are are making, same thing with police and everybody else in here. Our salaries are based on what other cities are doing. So it's not like we're coming in and asking for this or demanding these things. I mean, it's just going to happen based upon that survey. And, and everybody's going up. How they're doing it, I have no idea. I mean, we're just as nervous as you are because that puts more pressure on us finding. That's why we're putting all these responsibilities on other people is because we're trying to find ways to pay for this stuff and still maintain and the competitive nature between the different cities. So. Um, but there's documents in there for you tonight, Annie, that's talking about this. And Cody specifically, there's two documents in there that we have in there to give you this information. We are putting money away. So that's why I say it's not the end of the world. But again, we don't know what 2030 is going to be like and that's where we're nervous about. So we're trying to prepare now rather than wait till then, and then we have to take real drastic steps.
And I agree, but I'm not against anything. I'm not attacking anybody. I'm saying get me on your team. I want to know what you're seeing and why. If you're comfortable with eight percent, why?
One, our survey is based upon everybody else. And from what I know, I've talked to some federal government employees. They even got 10% raises here a year or two ago.
It was 4.5.
Some of the other ones got 10. And there's articles out there about people who got 10. I'm not going to argue with you. And I were, I live in far west. And, and I live in far west. I know they gave like nine or 10% raises last year. Like the little town of far west, like a lot of those other cities right now. And we're in a weird anomaly. I'm sure you've heard Casey talk about it a bazillion times, but since 2020, a lot of other entities have done big increases.
And that's great.
And it is great.
Why can they, why can they do it?
And it doesn't matter like why. The point is, is that they've done it and we'll talk about the why in a second.
I'm just saying you have models all over.
Yeah, I'll show you in just a second.
Say, how come they have an IT guy and a finance guy? We have models.
And then a lot of it is because their property taxes and stuff are higher than ours. Uh, you know, and like they are charging more, you know, you look at South Ogden, like their rates double what ours is. And they have a lot more employees and things too. And so they're charging for it. But a lot of those other entities, they've had huge increases. And so then how our model works, just like Steve said, is we survey those. And so for you to say that you don't know of anybody else, like everybody else that we're looking at, like the big entities, they've done large increases. Casey can probably rattle them off to you because he's always talking to other policemen. He's like, what are you making? What are you making? What are you making? And they've all done those big increases. And so then we're just trying to follow those because we kind of have to to keep people. But let's go to the tentative if that's okay, mayor and.
Say something real quick. So um, first of all, I appreciate Council Arnold. Um, he is the most experienced one in here. And um, he's just trying to do what he thinks is best by the residents. And, and to be honest, hopefully by the, for the employees too, like we're trying to sustain the whole thing. It's a little bit unfair, the order that we put this budget in because you don't have some of the knowledge or some of the information that might help you feel a little more at ease. We probably should have talked about some of this stuff before discussing this, this raise and maybe even before the 9010 that we discussed. Um, because I, I know where you're coming from. We hear constantly, it's got to be cut, it's got to be cut. And, and Council Arnold's saying, well, where do we cut? Like, let's see a cut somewhere, you know? I mean, all we talk about is how poor we are. Why are we talking about adding stuff? And so, so I appreciate where you're coming from. I really do. It's kind of unfair, the order that we did this in because Cody's going to share some information that's, that's going to hopefully put you a little more at ease. And so I, I feel bad like that this discussion happened this way and that we didn't do it in a different order. Because things are not as bad or as bleak as they once looked. And I, we, we try to, we try to not overplay that.
Oh, it's overplayed. It's overplayed.
Well, we, we try to not overplay that things are, things are good, things are actually okay. Because we do want to always be conscientious and not overspend and not make anybody think that we have tons of money.
And we don't know what's coming.
Because we don't know what's coming. But we have made some moves and, and I will let Mr. Carden go into it. We have made some moves over the past couple of years that have been super beneficial. And, and they're just because of the environment, the interest rate environment and because we did those franchise taxes. And because we don't have bonds, instead of bonds, we actually have money in a capital improvements fund, a lot of money. It's benefiting Riverdale City massively. So, Mr. Carden.
Another thing I'd say is you can always come and talk to me like, I haven't had any of you come talk to me. And I've talked to all of you like, hey, if you've got questions, come see me. Like talk to Steve, you can come in, my door is always open. I'm happy to answer any questions. Stacy's asked me a bunch of questions on data and things and I've showed them what I know. We can get more, we can do what you want. But like, we are trying to walk this line. And some of it, sometimes Steve's like, well, let's hold off a little bit on this or let's, you know, and some of it, the legislature writing one bill could kill us, right? And so we're trying to navigate this course that none of us have ever done. So I understand that there's some stress to, there's stress on our part too, as city employees. And when we bring something to you, it's because we feel like it's really important. And going to the 9010, the reason we brought that, Stacy told us, to be fair, we've got to do this before it was open enrollment. And so like, we had a hard deadline. Um, Stacy went to training with URS and they said, you've got to do this. That's why the 4.73 is on there tonight. We don't have a choice. Like we had to bring it to you. And if we're going to incorporate in the budget, we've got to talk to you about it. And so yeah, like timing wise, we might not always hit those the best, but we brought them to you as soon as we could and as soon as we trying to hit deadlines. So.
Before we move on from this, can I ask, what is, what, do you have an estimate of the cost of the increase to 4.73 would be?
Yeah, I mentioned earlier, it's about 62,000.
That's if you do it for.
For all employees.
All tier twos.
And that's annually.
So it would be a little less if we did only the point seven four.
Yeah. And it's, I've actually got that number too. Like if you only do the public safety, it's like 38, 40,000. Um, if you do some combination in there, if you did a little bump to the others, then it would be a little more than that. So.
Sure. Single me out. Thank you. Okay. Uh, well, we will just move on and leave that discussion for later. We'll move on to item number five, the tentative budget review of the department's funds and RDA by department heads and administration. Mr. Carden.
Hey, hold on just a second. She's just pulling stuff up here.
We're now getting into something that's probably going to be a fairly significant thing. Could we take a break?
Absolutely. Yep. Let's take a five-minute break.
Jesus, they're winner. Do you hate cheeses? You don't like the cheeses?
I don't like cheeses. If you want cheeses, you can have it.
What about goldfish?
Nope.
You don't like those either?
About nutters.
No. You hate everything in there?
These are great. I was looking at your.
Yes, I'm still there.
Thanks Bart. I was just getting ready to ask. Can you, uh, can you zoom that just a little bit? Uh, I know you can't. We won't be able to see the whole, uh.
Okay. So here's our budget and.
Let's see, are you on a microphone? We probably need you on a mic. I'm super sensitive. I watch a lot of other council meetings. I've been watching some at county, some stuff up there. Their mics are terrible. Oh, and when people don't go to the mic, you're just like, what is going on? Yeah, it's kind of like, yeah.
Okay. And so here's our tentative. A lot of the reasons this is laid out, why it is, is it's either state law or it's accounting standards and that's why we have things the way they are. Um, so here's our prior year actual 2022, 2023. Here's our current year budget. Here's our current year actual as of I ran this report. Here's our current year projected. So this is kind of where I think we'll be and this is our future year budget. Um, so you can see a lot of these numbers here and just in general, from an accounting standpoint, we always try to be conservative on our revenues. And then we try to be like worst case on our expenditures. So we're hoping that we come under our expenditures and we're over our revenues. Um, you can see here on our sales tax, we've been doing quite well. Um, eight point right there. Um, going, so we've showed you this chart before. Um, maybe not all of you, the, the new ones, but the old ones we have. So here's our sales tax, kind of the history of the city back to 92. You can see here's our sales tax that grew. Then they changed the funding in all five and that took effect about a year later. And so then we dropped down. So originally there was this Senate Bill 35 subsidy and it guaranteed us that we wouldn't drop below our 2005 level. So you can see that's why we stayed right there at all five. So then they came in and after they seen some stuff, they're like, oh, that's probably not going to quite work. So they came in with the hold harmless. And so that's the blue. And so you can see, it really did kind of save us during the recession because it held us at that base amount. And then we do get like a hundred percent of that hold harmless or the local option sales tax amount. And so we do get like more bang for our buck there because instead of getting like 50 cents on the bot dollar or 30 cents on the dollar, we get the whole dollar. Um, so then you can see COVID hit and things went crazy. And so we were kind of trending flat and then you can see it kind of went wild. And so when we talked to you about the property tax increase and some of those things, we were seeing these and if you remember, we're like, hey, we have no idea what's going to happen with a sales tax because it's up, but it could crash. Like we have no idea. We don't know. So then we've also shown you, um, let's see, hold on, this chart. So this is an estimate. So these blue lines, that matches these on this other graph of our city or local option sales tax. So the blue is actual what we've collected. And you can see it peaked, it went up a little bit with that. So if we continue to guess that trend, we are about 2.5, 2.6 million by the time we get to 2030. And with a lot of, I feel like the legislature kind of in some ways did us a disservice because in a lot of the things as over time, like the rates drop so that we're not going from a hundred percent to zero percent in a year. And you can see that's what's going to happen in 2031. Unless something happens, we're going to lose that whole 2.6 million. And it's going to be gone. And like I said, we've shown you this projection before. Um, so then coming back here, you can see here's our sales tax. Here's where we've been. We're budgeting significantly under what we're collecting. However, if we spend that stuff, then it's gone, right? And so that's where to do one-time things and things that we feel like are really necessary or important. But we've got to be very careful and conservative. Our franchise taxes, you can see they're doing really well. If you remember when we did that, we didn't know exactly what we were going to collect. We were thinking that it might be in the seven to $800,000 range, but we were hoping it would at least be 300,000. You can see we're doing quite well there. So where does this all go? So here's our sales tax. I updated this just a few minutes before the meeting. You can see we've got, um, I've changed this a little bit because Counselor Hawes wanted it a little different and it's good information. You can see here's the city option. So you can see those amounts kind of cross over. We're averaging about $2 million in that local option. Um, you can also see our sales tax is actually down slightly. It's still up, but it's down slightly from the prior years. Um, so where does that all play? So here's our audit report. Um, and this is on our website. It's on the state auditor's website. So a couple of our financial statements here. So this is, we've got a report by fund. So here's our general fund. You can see our sales tax here matches what I have up here in our data. Um, and you can see when everything was said and done, we had 3.2 million dollars left over at the end of the year for 2023. Now, however, we can't spend all that. If we spend that, we're going to be up a creek without a paddle when we get to 2030. So then we are able to fund our 35% fund balance and you can see that this 5.1 million, that's about 35,000 or 35%. We're under that just by about $5,000. So we don't get some pain in the butt auditor that's like, well, it's 35% or less, not up to 35%, but that's 35%. And so then you can see we transferred 2.4, 2.5 million to capital projects fund for 2023. So we are okay. Now, if something happens, yeah, we're in trouble. And if we spend this money on reoccurring things, we're in trouble. If we go out and hire a bunch of new employees, we're in trouble because then that money's gone and we're going to have to make that up. But in all those data that we've given you, that information, we look okay. And we're doing okay. You can see now, have we replaced the whole 2.6? We're close. And if the sales tax keeps trending the way it's going, the legislature doesn't do anything crazy, we're okay. Now, do we have tons of extra room? Probably not. Because we need 700,000, a million dollars extra for budgeting purposes so that we can budget a little conservative on our revenues and we can, and we can spend. But, but you can see like on our budget, um, if we go back here to some of these charts and this is on the packet, we're budgeting like 17.5 million dollars. And some of that's for transfers and stuff. So on 17.5 million, the percentage of that is very small. And like 60 grand is like not even a percent. So some of those little things that we're asking for, like, we feel like that's the biggest bang for our buck on some of that employee stuff, but we've got to be careful. So where that all comes into play on the current year budget is you can see we are budgeting conservative on our sales tax. Part of that's intentionally because we don't want to spend all that. And if you remember, we, what you guys have wanted to do and what we've recommended is we're transferring all that franchise tax to um, the, the capital projects fund right now. And I can show you why I increased this line item. I increased the transfer to offset that. Something I've talked to the mayor and Steve about. And they've been like a little hesitant on implementing, but we can look at is we could actually start transferring our like local option sales tax money every month to the capital projects fund and then um, like live on what we're going to have come 2030. Like we can do some stuff like that or we can transfer 75% of it or whatever we want. Um, but we're trying to do it in such a way that it's not like burdensome and complicated to that it's easy. But some of the things like Steve and I, I was talking to him about presenting some of this stuff to you guys tonight. And I know it's super simple and we can go over it in more detail. But we're really here to talk about the tentative, but we wanted you to know where we're at too. Um, it's kind of a fine line, right? Because we've got to tell the legislature, hey, we need some help. And there's a real cost to these things, which there really is. Um, but at the same time, like we're trying to do everything we can on the backend. That's why we're letting positions go away and we're trying to be really conservative. Like you guys talk about it being institutionalized, like a lot of it is institutionalized with our department heads. As we prepare budgets, like they. Like a lot of it is institutionalized with our department heads. As we prepare budgets, like they know the drill. Like, we're not asking for new employees. We're not doing these things. Because we know that we've got to prepare because it's going to be as bad for us as employees if we get to 2030 and the city doesn't have any money. Because, you know, like we're going to have empty seats and those kind of things. So you can see we're doing okay. Our vehicle fee and lube have been up, so I increased that budget. Our transient room tax, that's all Motel Six, just so you guys know that. We don't get a lot of money from them. We'd get some property taxes too, but that's money from them. We haven't made any increases in our licenses and permits, our grants, we left them the same. We have some federal funding. We've got our ARPA. We've actually spent that now, but when I prepared the budget, we still had a little bit left. A lot of that was for projects that Sean did to run like water lines under the freeway and under the river and those kind of things. So that was good. The CMAC money is for the roundabout on 1050. Hopefully we can get that rolling here shortly. Our Senate, this account, that's our local option, our county option, transportation and highway money. So it's been doing well because it's been up with sales tax. I'm increasing the budget there. Our classy roads money has been doing well, so I increased the budget there. So that's our intergovernmental revenues and taxes. Our charges for services, and once again, we're really just focusing kind of on this, this last column. You can see Rich wanted to do some increases in his fees and then the corresponding revenue accounts with most of his activities and things. So we've done that. Our ambulance is doing well. That's fluctuated a lot during COVID for a while. Like people weren't calling the ambulance, and then for a while they were calling the ambulance a ton. And that's kind of stabilized. And so we've pulled the budget up a tiny bit there. Our fines, our, our police and the highway patrol are writing a ton of tickets. And so you can see where, you know, a couple of years ago, we were talking like, hey, holy cow, like we're not getting any fine revenue, like our tickets are dropping. That's totally different story today. Like those are really up. So we pulled our budget up. We don't know if they'll stay quite at that level. The state's done some stuff with the FERD prosecution and other things that some of those like plea in abeyance fees and things, they go directly to the state. So we're losing a little bit of money there, but we're still doing quite well. One of the things, because we have a bunch of that cash on hand, our interest income has been really, really good these last couple of years. And so I've got the budget up for that. So this top number is how much I'm estimating we'll earn in revenue. And then we allocate a bunch of that from the general fund out to all the other funds based upon how much cash they have monthly when I do our accounting. And so that's what those two numbers are. Our lease revenue, that's associated with some of our cell towers and our comm tower. We pulled that up a little bit because with some, like with our agreements, they hit a different tier and they're going up. We also have to budget to roll things over, and so we have money for that $2 million transfer to the capital projects fund. We've got that money. We have to basically like add it in so that we can add the transfer. And so that's our miscellaneous revenue. And so in total, that is our revenues of the general fund. And so I don't know if you have any questions. I'm going super fast here.
Can you go back to the inter, intergovernmental? And you said that you had increased some of them?
Yeah, these two right there that are highlighted yellow. So the local option, transportation, highway, and also the classy road funds.
Oh, okay.
And just as a reminder, I usually only talk about the stuff that's changing, whether it's going up or down. Everything else I kind of assumes like our baseline from the current year budget. So I'm just going to hit on highlights.
When you said the 30,000 isn't, isn't even a percent, are you talking the 30,000 for the public employees?
Yeah, as the 17 million as a whole, like, we're not even, we're decreeing over a tiny percentage there.
But if you take the 9010, which was $80,000, and this $60,000, it's going to be roughly 170, which is 1% over the next eight years. I mean, you're talking 8% of the budget is going to be in just these two things that we talked about. Till 2030.
Yeah, not probably 8% because it'd still be 1% per year. Yeah, so saying eight is a little.
But it's the 82,000 that we talked about, the 9010, is that built into this budget?
It is not, because you guys just tabled it, and so we did not build it into the budget right now. So, but like Steve and I, when we talk about a lot of this stuff, like, and you know, we went over the, the budget with the mayor before this meeting, a couple of weeks, like a week or so ago, like we tried to only put stuff in there that we feel like we absolutely need. And, and some of it, like, yeah, like I was talking to Chief Sholly for just a second before, during our break. And like there are other reasons why public safety rates are higher, right? Like he was talking about cancer and stuff, and that's true. Like, a lot of those employees die after, they don't get to live their full life, right? Just like military personnel, like. And so there are definitely reasons why those public safety rates are higher. And so there are issues, there are reasons there for sure, most definitely, not just actuarial, and so they can retire quicker. So we always do this. Here's a summary of the benefit changes. So there was the HSA, FSA contribution limits have been updated because they always change each year. Our overall medical premiums, our employees have been really good utilizing their medical premiums. And so we only had a one and a half percent increase in our health insurance, which Stacy was stoked about because it's been significantly higher. We provided the benefit summary in the packet. So if you want to look at all those details, they're in the packet. They were in the amended. So for you guys' department, like mayor and council, you can see we've just got those normal citywide facts with the, the steps. And then we also included $15 per month as electronic device compensation. We're going to include that in the, and we can do more if you want. Like we talked to the mayor about it. If you do the math on that, that works out that if you do the 15 times 12 times four, that's $720 every four-year term. So we're trying to do an amount that we felt like you could buy a device every four years, but wasn't exorbitant that you were getting beat up politically over that you were giving yourself like an extra above and beyond the wage. We did not do that same thing for the planning commission. Part of the reason being is they just get like a $50 a month stipend. And so depending economically, like then it would take, for you guys to go buy a device, it's probably like one month or a little less than one month's worth of compensation. For them, it would take them a year or more to like have enough money if they didn't have a device and needed to go buy one. So currently we're planning on the city still providing devices to the planning commission, but doing that stipend for you guys, if you guys are okay with that. And it had just come through as normal compensation, so we don't get into tax implications and those kind of things. So the compensation will bring you a policy like we normally do with the budget, final budget adoption. The compensation for the mayor would be about $2,468 a month, and the council would be about $997 based upon those steps. There's non-election this year, so we pulled the budget on that. The mayor asked for a little extra money, so if you guys wanted to do a survey. So we've got $12,000 in special department expenses for next year. We left this $20,000 in there to cover lunch with the mayor and the 2030 plan for 18.5. And that's money available if we need like Fred to do a study, if there's more information you guys want, if we need to hire a lobbyist, whatever the case may be. So we've had that money in the budget this year. And we put it back in the budget for next year. So if there's something you'd like to do. The city has internal service funds. We have an IT and a motor pool, so we basically like lease, if you will, the vehicles and the IT infrastructure. And so then we, we charge based upon like how many devices and how many email accounts and those kind of things, so that we kind of make the internal service funds whole. So that's the allocation. So that's the mayor and council budget that we're proposing. And unless you guys have any questions or changes, I'll just keep rolling. Legal, so this is our court and the attorney portion of the city. So here's our budget. We've got our citywide facts. We have a couple of changes. Our public defender, we had a new contract, if you remember with that, and so that amount's changed a little bit. We're charging per case now, which is good because hopefully our judge will, and I talked to the court just the other day because I supervise them as well. And Judge Olds is doing a good job. The prosecutors are reminding him they can actually charge for that public defender. And now that we're being charged per case, it's really easy to know what that cost is. And so, but the cost has been up a little bit with our volume being up. So we bumped that up to 15,000. Our bailiff wages. Say that one more time.
Does it include the judge and the, and salary?
Yeah.
Speaking of that, before we move on, we just got a notice from the AOC yesterday. Our judge's salary is going up 24%, wasn't it Cody?
So we're required by law supposedly to like meet a minimum on him based upon how many cases we have and stuff. So the AOC basically says we have to pay him at least this amount, and it's going up that amount. So our bailiff's wages, if you remember, we have a new contract there. It's up, so we've got an increase there to 26,000. If you remember, we're getting rid of the drug court come June 30th. And the county is, the county's not picking it up, but the countywide. If you remember Judge Mehmet, who substituted here for a little while in between Judge Remstrom and Judge Olds, he's going to start a new drug court that will accept people from throughout the county. And our court clerk that helps with that is kind of volunteering to help do some of those things too. And so we'll basically be able to send those same people to the same service providers, but to this new drug court. So we pulled that money out of the budget, and then we've got the inner fund, the info technology payments. So that's legal. City administration, Steve really didn't want any changes, so we don't, we have like some with the citywide facts with the salary and wages, and then just the internal service fund charges. Business administration, that's my main department. So main changes. Our utilities have been running just a little higher. I think our utility rates, it looks like Rocky Mountain Power and some of those, their rates have went up, and so we just pulled that budget up. Our audit's been averaging a little bit more, so we pulled that up. Our insurance, unfortunately, we've had some lawsuits and things lately, right? And so that impacts our insurance. We pay for all the insurance out of my department. So we're anticipating that that will go up with some of those court charges. And then we're having way more people pay with credit cards. And so the special department expense line item is mainly merchant and credit card fees. And so I am budgeting an increase there just to cover those. And then we have a small increase just in miscellaneous. That's kind of a catch-all. And then just our internal service fund changes.
So that's. Charge a fee to cover the?
We don't. Remember, we talked to you guys about that a few years ago, and you didn't want to.
A fee to cover credit cards?
Yeah. We talked about that, yep. And you guys didn't want to at the time, so we have never done that.
Wasn't it around 2020? When was it we talked about?
We've talked to you about it a couple of times. We talked about a, a Counselor Hanson, the other Counselor Hanson was the one that was really strongly opposed against it. Because we brought it up like two or three times. And everybody was kind of opposed about it, so we haven't ever brought it back up.
I'd be willing to look at it. Any, any fee that comes to the city, I'm, I'm pro passing it on.
Okay.
Was he against it because it's for, even if you're using a credit card to pay your utility bills?
Yeah. I think so. I think he was like, well, I'm paying the same way. What does it matter? But in reality, like, if you're paying with a credit card, it's costing the city more to provide that.
The bank transfers and stuff don't have that added cost.
And it would depend, I think, depending on what software you use and how you pay, or like the provider you use, the merchant, depends upon the cost. So some of them have like a lower cost if you do like a bank transfer or like the city does an ACH for utility bills, like all of those would probably be free or reduced. But if you use a credit or debit card, it's going to have a higher merchant fee.
I think that debit cards are a lot less than credit cards.
Yeah, it depends on the individual carrier and stuff. And like some of them, like with Express Bill Pay who we use, they charge a per transaction fee, so it doesn't matter how you pay. If you're paying with a card, we pay a fixed base amount, and then there's a fee on the top of that depending on how you pay.
Is it that we don't accept credit card payments for utility bills? Just to resolve it, even though?
We could, but there's a ton of people who pay that way, and there's a ton of people who like through their Express Bill Pay portal that they have like a saved credit card or debit card. And so like it would make billing a lot more burdensome if we did that.
Utilities have a much lower merchant rate than, than others.
You are correct.
And so, yeah, are they passing that on to us?
Yes, we have multiple merchant accounts, and so we actually have one merchant account that our utilities run through, and then a separate merchant account through the same merchant that all of our other payments run through. So you are correct.
And because there's, there's the person who doesn't have the money, so they're using the credit card, but then there's the other people that are getting SkyMiles or something.
So we can bring that back to you. Just the last time we had talked to you guys about it, I think we brought it up a couple of years in a row, and you're like, no, we don't want to do that. And some, like we use Express Bill Pay here. Once again, I live in Far West, and like I pay my bill online just so I can see what it's like. They use a different vendor, and you actually pay the vendor separate. So all the merchant charges go directly to the vendor, and then the money just goes to, I pay Bonavista for like my water and my Far West charges. Bonavista collects all them. So there are some options there. We've just liked Express Bill Pay, but that would make it easier. That's in my miscellaneous, so it's or special department expenses. Sorry, there's a budget note there. It's 1044, 4500. There's a little bit more in there, but not a lot. Like that is the vast majority of it. And we could allocate, I think I've talked to you about this before. We can't, you know, like we get to 2030 and we're like, oh, shiz, like we're in bad shape. Like some of these, like we're paying for all of them here. We could allocate some of that out to the utility funds. But for the time being, like unless there's a benefit, it's way easier to manage it in one place. And I think it's easier for you guys to see like what we're spending, whether then we spread it to the wind. So that's what we're doing, so.
Do, do we have enough interest in that to bring it back? Not, not that you're voting either way, but I've got kind of a one and a maybe, and I don't know where the others are, just because we'll put the work into it if there's some interest. To look at.
Bart, you still there?
I think we've got three there, so we could at least bring it in.
Okay. Do you want to look at that for this year, or do you want us to look at it for next year? What are you thinking? Sooner the better? Okay.
It's a bigger implementation to do that of convenience fees. It doesn't just happen overnight. It takes some time, right, to get that implemented?
Well, through the budget process, we just add it to the consolidated fee schedule, and then there'd be some backend stuff that we'd have to add to our merchant and stuff. So we can do stuff pretty quick if you want to. Building, if you remember, this is a new department. We separated that so that we can track our building permits separate. And so that's why back here, we don't have much there. We did it because they almost want to look at it like impact fees almost. They want to make sure we're spending that. And so we're still trying to get that just right. That's why this is 70 and it shows 81 here because it took us a little while to get it in the right place. And I got a journal entry, some stuff now that we've kind of got it going the right places. But for our budget, the only thing we're really changing is the telephone. Most of the other line items are staying pretty much the same as what we had, and we'll hope that works good, and we'll reevaluate more next year. For non-departmental, so this is kind of our catch-all for weird stuff. We've got our ARPA funds there, and like I said, those are all spent. This is our transfer to the capital projects fund. Our internal service fund, some of that, it's hard to allocate directly to all the different funds, like such as our like internet and, and things like that. How do, and our phone service, how do we allocate that out accurately? And so we've just kind of done a catch-all. That's how Lynn used to do it before me, and it's worked well. However, our IT costs are starting to go up a little bit, so I budgeted a little bit more there. And then this is what I've gotten for increase in reserves for just kind of our leftover. Our police, we've got our citywide facts. Casey wanted to make a few changes. Our subscriptions and memberships, some of those are going up, so we wanted to bump that up 200 bucks. We got 3,200 there. Their travel and training, we tweaked that just a little bit to be 20,000. Their Lexi pole is going up, so we bumped that up to 7,700. Their utilities, we're doing the same as ours, so we bumped that up. If you remember, we pay South Ogden an animal shelter fee, and that goes up, so we've got that. This is our assessments for like CSI and those others. So we bumped it up just a little bit for those. He wanted a little bit with the special department expense, we pulled 6,000 out of that. And I'll show you that where that's going here in just a second. And then like our other assessments for the drug task force, the SWAT, that was going up a tiny bit, so we bumped that up. I didn't highlight it. I missed this one. This one right here, the 9,000, that's where the 6,000 is going. Originally, we just put that 6,000 for the, the mental health support up in special department expenses, but because that's getting more traction at the state, and there's some grants and things, we felt like it was better to give it its own line item, so it was easier to track. Like we can run a, an AP report, but this way it's just real easy to see. So we did that, both police and fire. Like we can run a an AP report, but this way it's just real easy to see. So we did that in both police and fire. Um so that's that new account and new line item. Our prevention, he wanted a little bit more money there just for the block parties and those kind of things. So we bumped that up to five. Their internal service funds, um we've got those there. And then capital outlay, if you remember, we have to rotate their body armor. I think it's every seven years. It's either every five or seven, and so that's up. And so it's the year to rotate that. And so we put thirty-five thousand in for that. And that's based upon like a a bid that he got and a quote from the state. Um fire, so Jared's been gone. Um he made some budget requests. We've put all those in here. Depending on what, I know you guys are anxious to talk about the ambulance and those kind of things. There might be some tweaks to this budget depending on what's ultimately decided with his department. Like if you pulled the ambulance, we had Jared submit a budget request two different ways, one with ambulance, one without. So that we'd know the budget impact both ways. Um so depending on when that comes forward and all that, there, I would have. I anticipate that there's some tweaks to his department before the final budget, so it'll probably look a tiny bit different. And depending on if you guys have some of those discussions, it might look significantly different. But right now, we just have a couple. Um we've got a reallocation of that six thousand for the mental health support there. Um and then some capital outlay money he wanted to, and they need a new ice machine. And then where the fire inspectors over there, he wanted a little bit of money to remodel and kind of like improve the office space over there. And then we got the internal service funds allocations.
Part-time office.
So. Um community development.
Can can we um just figure out a way to figure out what the fire department's going to be? I mean, rather than, I I don't know what we're talking about with the fire district and all that kind of stuff. But I mean, if we have a goal and just say this is this is where we're headed, this is why and.
All all of that's moving forward now with Chief Sholly being gone. We have, I haven't even had the time to meet with the mayor. I met with Chief Sholly today. On a couple of these items and that's nobody's fault. It's just how it is, but that's all moving forward. So um once we can get together, I'll meet with the mayor first and then we'll bring stuff into you when we see. We've got the RFPs on the ambulance. Uh we only get received two, but and the same thing with the Southern District. I can update you on all of that later. We're just not there yet that I can really give you a full report tonight.
But it'll be before we do the final.
That's the plan. That's the plan. For sure, the ambulance, I think, will be able to address before the budget year. As far as the Southern Fire District, probably not. I don't think we can move that that fast, but we'll have to see, maybe, but we'll we'll see. But I'll update you when we know more.
So so if we have the possibility of a Southern Fire District, how does the taxes go?
That's something we'd have to work out. On the Southern Fire District, the with the Weber County Fire District, that one's sad. I mean, that one'd be easier to to get a report back on and an actual number. But uh again, we we barely started on that Southern Fire District. Um just, we've reached out to get the reports and to start get some numbers and stuff like that. And I just don't know that that's gonna move that fast. I think that'd be hard.
If we go Southern Fire District, we lose control, right?
It depends on how you.
Yeah, it depends on how it's set up, because the thing about the Southern Fire District, the the board would probably be our mayor's and maybe a council member. So we would still have a lot more input on that one than we would say the Weber County Fire District. And and I know all the cities are concerned about that exact same thing, that we still have some control and some say in that. So we we would, we would make that up with what, how we, you know, want it. So most likely, when we talked about that preliminarily, that would be uh mayor's most likely on that board.
How a couple of those districts do is like I live in Weber Fire District and they really are great. Like I've had them respond to my house or my grandma's house next door several times. But I just pay property tax to them and they're a hundred percent funded by property tax. There's some other fire districts in the state. And like Fred or somebody else was telling us that he's helped set one of those up and it's a split. So they have their own property tax rate for capital, but then the operating budget comes from the cities. And so not only do you have a mayor there, but the mayor is like watching over the city's contribution too. So there's a bunch of different options there depending on what everybody decided or if we even do it. Um community development, um that's Brandon's department, so that's changed a lot because we had some other employees in there, if you remember. Now we've got building and we got fire other places, so that's changed a little bit. Um we might need to tweak this more over the years, but we'll just kind of see how it goes this year. Travel and training, we bumped that down just a little bit because we just got Brandon in there now. We changed mobile phone for the same reason. Engineering and professional services, that's money for Brandon, so if he needs to send stuff out. Um you can see right now we're averaging over that. A lot of that needs to go back into building, because that's where we have the budget. And so we'll take care of that before the final budget and we might even need to have a budget amendment because you can see that amount's huge. That's so big because we had Tesla and we've had America First and we've had a bunch of those. We try to kind of budget like a middle of the road number, but if we have a lot of those big ones come in and he needs to send them out for plan reviews, then. We collected the money on the building permit and the plan review, but um we maybe didn't necessarily have all the money to pay for that.
Can I ask a question about training? Um I know in the past, the city was limited to training with only within the state. Is that still a thing or does some of the training go to out-of-state trainings?
That that actually was a policy of of Mr. Hanson when he was the city administrator. I don't necessarily hold to that. I think there's times when especially like in Brandon's position and even fires had to leave the state a couple of times. So I haven't objected to it. We just clear it in advance, so.
But largely it is just within the state or there's a lot of stuff like in Vegas or Mesquite. Um so for the most part, it is all that, like local. So that's community development. Like if you have any questions, interrupt me. Um straight, so this is Sean's department. He wanted some more money in equipment and maintenance for twenty-seven-five. So that we had ten thousand dollars there for one vehicle to stand blast and repaint the bed, the bed. I believe that's one of their big trucks. Um we rolled over some classy road money and local options. Some of that, they were hoping the projects would get started, but with the spring and the contractors and everything. It's probably gonna be midsummer before a lot of those get rolling. We also had that money in here for that ten fifty west roundabout project, that C Mac money. We don't know exactly how that'll be spent. My guess is is that UDOT will probably pay for that and then we'll actually transfer the money to UDOT. Like we'll pay UDOT rather than us pay the contractor, but we'll just have to see how that one goes. We've got our internal service fund allocations here. We've got forty thousand for capital outlay. I had in the note asphalt roller for twenty. It should be forty. I've got that fixed, but the cost of those asphalt rollers have just went up and they've had a hard time buying them. So we're just rolling that over from the current year budget because he doesn't think he'll get it bought by the end of the year. Parks, um they wanted a little more money for travel and training, splash pad expenses. They wanted a little more money for splash pad. Just if they have to replace some of those big pumps and things, they get quite expensive. Um our ramp grant, if you remember, we get a local option or a population grant each year, so we haven't spent that. We've been saving it up. I know Sean and Rich have been talking about things to spend that on, so we've got about thirty-nine thousand dollars of cat of money on hand for that. So we've got that in the budget to spend. And then capital outlay, just kind of their normal stuff to rehab the park, some fiber or some. Um tree removal, playground parts. They want to replace the grills at the park because they're wearing out. Um and some grass seed for twenty-five thousand, so that's parks. Um community services, so this is Rich's department. He wanted a little more money for travel and training. Some of that's various reasons. Um office supplies, he wanted an increase. Old glory days, he's trying to apply for some grants and so he wanted a little more budget there to. To help facilitate some of that stuff, um and a little more money for fireworks, because I think we've been spending that. Um these are some of the senior programs here. Um we bumped that one up just a little bit and the other one down just a tiny bit. We're leaving the senior wrench stuff alone for right now because we're still going through all that with the county and Weber Human Services. Hopefully we'll have more information for you on that in the future, but for right now, we're just kind of leaving it the same. Um and then he just had a few other increases, crafts and skills. He wanted a little bump. Baseball and softball is his biggest change. He wanted to do some work on the fields. Um they're just starting to deteriorate and so we budgeted a little money there. His special department expense, they've been averaging a little high and that's kind of like, it's hard line item by line item because everybody's a little different. So the special department expenses usually is things that are specific to that department that they're buying year in and year out. And so it's a little different than the miscellaneous that is kind of like more of a pure miscellaneous. Um Roy Aquatic Center and Complex, he wanted a little more money just anticipating um cost increases. And then more utilization of the complex with um it being open again.
I had a question on that. So this year, are we only doing four swim nights? We do have five, okay. I must have missed some one somewhere.
Do you want to talk about your ideas there?
Yeah, let's talk about an idea. Oh, sorry. Let's have you use the mic.
Over the last couple of years, the swim night dynamic has has changed quite a bit as Roy City has been adjusting fees. They were doing resident, non-resident rates. They have different fees for the weekdays versus weekends and. And I anticipate their fees to continue to go up. Um when we reserved our swim nights this year, I think they had seven nights available and I took five of them. Um and so they're selling out and as you know, it's a kind of supply and demand and I would anticipate. Anytime you're on a pool, you're not breaking even and so they're trying to maximize their revenue, so I would anticipate them continuing to adjust those fees. But uh in in trying to determine what to do, I know that when we moved from ten to five swim nights, there was a little bit of. Questioning from residents and residents like their swim nights. Um and it's really tough budgetarily. If Roy continues raising their fees, we're gonna continue dropping swim nights. Um but I wanted to ex possibly explore another option. Layton Surf and Swim, um they operate year round, but um. And so the potentially, we could do swim nights whenever, right? But their fee is about a third of what Roy charges currently. Um and their capacity is a little bit less than Roy. Um Roy's capacity is a thousand and if I remember correctly, surf and swims was around six hundred. We typically get six hundred or so to swim nights, so that that would be somewhat of a concern. I uh obviously it's a little further to travel as well, so I don't quite know how that plays and how you guys feel about that. But it's an option that I thought might be worth at least mentioning to you guys and and just getting a little feedback. And if that's something we should look into, just trying to manage the the swim money the best the way that we can. And and knowing that Roy City um is gonna do what's best for them as well on the on the fee side of things.
Have you looked at North Shore at all?
Yeah, yeah, I've looked at North Shore as well. Their capacity is quite a bit smaller.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, they're like three to four hundred capacity, although I mean it's still an option because it is a lot cheaper than, I I don't have the price.
And it's a summer only, right?
Yeah, and I don't know the price off the top of my head, but I could I could get that information.
Well, I would like to see a couple more nights and if that meant getting some, you know, the surf and swim or whatever, it sounds like. Are we up to fifteen hundred at Roy or how much, how much are they?
Uh we paid fifteen hundred per night.
Per night?
For the five nights, yeah. And and my thought would be maybe we mix. I wouldn't go exclusively to to surf and swim, right? But maybe we we just maybe mix in one or two or and just kind of see how they go. I don't.
We gave you like fifteen hundred bucks, you could get like maybe three nights.
Yeah, yeah, eh, if I remember correctly, surf and swim was like six hundred bucks, but yeah.
So we can test it and see how people respond?
Yeah, and the way that we have that budget, Cody, um the aquatic center and the complex is one line item. And so the aquatic center, I kind of try to stay pretty set on, you know, I was doing ten nights at seven hundred bucks. I was spending seven thousand dollars and um the complex varies based on usage, right? And so there is a little bit of leeway in that budget, if that makes sense. Like we could do three nights at six hundred bucks because there's a few hundred dollars in there, so.
One one quick thing, can we just make sure the coun- uh council understands? How we buy those nights and those passes, like I just, I don't ever want them to think that we're like getting. Because we give the residents that kind of better deal, we're not actually getting a better deal from Roy. Um can you just explain that real quick? Sorry, not to make the meeting longer, but we pay full price.
Yeah, so on Roy's fee schedule, um we we come in, um they have a resident rate and then they have a non-resident rate. And we come in and we we, let me think. So Roy charges us, they'll invoice us for their full rate. Okay?
Yeah.
So they invoice us for their full rate. What we do is when people come into the office at the community center. We'll charge fifty percent of that rate and we'll collect that from the user, from the customer. And then we'll take and we'll pay that hundred percent invoice. So Riverdale City is covering fifty percent of that cost for our residents. Um but but Roy City is getting paid a hundred percent. They're getting paid just just like they would if the person came in and paid for themselves. The difference is it allows our people eh the discount on our backs, right? We're paying the difference.
Just because I had a family member in Roy that couldn't figure out why I could go to the complex for less than they could as a non-resident. But it was because Riverdale was paying the other half. It's not the Roy's giving Riverdale some.
Right. Roy's being made whole.
They're being made whole.
And that's our budget. That's our line item right there.
Yeah, people need to understand that.
We're saving like five hundred thousand dollars or more from not having a swimming pool, right?
Us, us?
Yeah.
And and the, not the political side of it, but the political unrest that people start saying, well, we want a pool. And it's like, well, we we partner with Roy.
Yeah.
It it helps a lot.
Option.
Yeah, okay, thanks, Rich.
So what do we charge for that pass? What is resident price for that pass?
You know, coun- Councilman Richter, we have not sold a pass for over a year.
Well, they've been closed.
Yeah, yeah, so so but a- and and they did notify me that as they anticipate opening up later in twenty twenty-four, they are raising their rates. And I don't know their new rates, but if I recall, they had a a month pass. That we were charging our residents thirteen fifty-four and we were paying twenty-seven dollars for. And um and that was just your normal, that wasn't your senior, that wasn't, that was just kind of your normal. So that's about what the pricing was, but.
But we weren't really doing a lot of those even when they were open, just a few?
You know, we were spending, I want to say close to like ten thousand dollars a year or so. We were spending ten thousand dollars a year and then obviously our residents were spending another ten. So a couple, I don't know, five, six a month. Yeah.
So is the council okay if Rich pursues maybe three nights in Leyton? Okay.
Okay.
Thanks.
Okay, so that is our general fund and if you look at this like in total, I. And we did have some federal money and stuff in there in the current year budget, but our total budget's only going up about a hundred and fifty thousand. Um so that's our general fund. I'm gonna go through the RDA funds pretty quick because there's not a lot of changes there. So this is our general RDA fund. It's kind of where our catchall is, so we're just budgeting interest there at two twenty. Um all the RDA areas for the time being are expired. Um and we just have some miscellaneous expenses all throughout here. It's kind of where we pay for our RDA attorney, Adam Long. It's where we can, we had some money in there for a sewer study and we might need to finish that because like stuff was really wonky during COVID. When we were trying to do that sewer sewer study and then the difference, we're just putting into an increase in reserves, but that's kind of our catchall. Um RDA fund, Riverdale Road RDA fund, we still have a little bit of money sitting there. We've got a meeting with RDA attorney because there's a new bill. That after five years, any leftover um funds has to be transferred to like a housing RDA fund. That's what we were trying to use to pay for part of that cross easement access. We're working to see if where we've kind of encumbered those funds, if we can keep doing that. And so we've got that money there. Um and we've got a largely set apart for improvements. If you remember, some of that's to go off of like three hundred to Brands Way, so we're working on that. Um our ten fifty west RDA, that's expired. That's over where like Target was. That's kind of how we paid for the senior housing facility. So that one's done. Weber River, that's back here. That one's all done and along expired, so we don't have anything there. Five fifty west, that expired a couple of years ago. Um so we've just kind of got the residual in there. Same thing, that's neighboring to that same cross easement access. So we've got some money budgeted there. We're just basically rolling that over because we're still working on that, trying to get that going. We had a meeting this week about that. So we've got some money for improvements primarily associated with that. Um the West Bench RDA, so that one's our our new one, right? So Brandon, I believe, fired the filed the information with the county, so as of January first of twenty twenty-five, that will be triggered. That's the last year we can trigger that, so we don't have any property tax money, but that's where our proceeds from like Tesla went, so we're budgeting. Uh to use a hundred thousand of the fund balance and then we've just got allocated to some attorney services, professional services and miscellaneous. So that as we get developing that up there and working with America First and those things, if we need some money, we have it available in the correct budget. So that's the West Bench RDA for right now and then this will look quite different probably next year. Because we'll have property tax revenue coming into this RDA and it will be triggered. Um the statutory housing fund, this is the one tied to five fifty west. Um we've just got a little money budgeted for interest. a little money budgeted for interest and then some use of fund balance and the offset to that is some admin, insurance, rental expenses and some improvements. We still need to do the transfers back to a couple of these funds. We're working with Brandon with that and Adam Long. So we'll try and get that done here the next year now that we've got some stuff cleaned up a little bit. Housing RDA, same thing. We've got a little money budgeted for interest. That's where our RDA loans are. So we've got a little interest money budgeted there. We've got our use of fund balance to for the offset. And then where we've got that, we've got some attorney services. So if we need help with loans and professional services, same thing, and then miscellaneous, that would cover like the software we're using for our loans, like it's quite old and it's actually unsupported at this point. So if we needed to buy some new software, or if we looked at like outsourcing or doing something different with those RDA loans, that's where we've got that money budgeted. Fund thirty, so this is our senior housing facility fund. So like we talked about earlier, so we had that discussion with Fred Philpott. Rich took some of those numbers and he had an idea. So do you want him to talk about that real quick?
I'd almost rather wait on that one just because it's going to take a little bit of time. And we need still need to gather some of that information, but we'll we'll bring it in soon with in one of our next meetings.
So basically, what we build into the budget is just kind of like a ten percent increase. And so that's what we've got in the rents here. That's the current rates. That's what the new proposed rates would be. And we'll get you that information before the final budget adoption. But that's kind of what we're looking at. And so that would accelerate, like the mayor was talking about, that rent schedule a little bit. And hopefully kind of like keep get us there a little faster. We've got some use of fund balance there. I'll talk about what that's for here in just a second. Our expenditures, for the most part, they're staying pretty much the same. Where it's changing a bunch is with our capital costs. We're kind of holding off doing anything because we're waiting to see what you guys wanted to do. But we're planning on moving forward with some of those repairs. So we've got the roof in here for eighty. We don't know if that'll cover it or not. But we're budgeting a little bit of money for kitchen appliances just to replace as needed. We got fifty thousand for the dining room floor. We have no idea if that's a good number. That was the number we had a couple of years ago, but we had it on the to replace this year. And then we've got some money so that we can start rotating those rooftop AC units. So hopefully in the next year, we'll have some of those big capital costs done. And so that's what we've got right now for that fund. Capital Projects Fund, here's the offset from the Chancellor from the general fund. You can see we're budgeting quite a bit of interest revenue there. Based upon what I calculated, that's what I thought we'd get, but we'll just have to see. Civic Center, we've got in here. Remember, we talked to you about replacing a bunch of the broken windows upstairs for thirty thousand. We've got fifteen thousand dollars to replace the core exterior doors down here. We talked to the mayor and he thought we should put a third of the furniture in there. So that's what we did. And he would also like to replace you guys' chairs in here. And there's quite a few of them. So when we did the math, we thought about a thousand dollars a chair plus a little extra. And hopefully, we can find something for cheaper. So we have all that in the Capital Projects Fund for about for a budget of one eighteen. If you remember, we talked to you about doing the police station, some evidence storage. This is a little higher than we originally proposed. It was sixty what we had when we talked to you last time. He would like to do a room adjacent to it that they also use for some storage. So we've got eighty thousand in there for that. We got the fire station for, and I'll stop here in just a second. Let me go over all that and then we can talk. Jared would like to replace his SCBA fill station for sixty five thousand. So we've got that in there. Rich has his bleacher replacement. If you remember, we got a ramp grant for like fifty grand on that. We just got that money. But that's going to most likely take place in July, I believe. So we rolled that money over so that we have it for next year. We've got the playground at Lower Riverdale Park. We had it in the current budget for three fifty. It's going to be summer or fall before we get that replaced. And the cost is a little more. So we bumped that up to four fifty. There's the potential for some land acquisition that Stephen Brandon will talk to you later. But we wanted to put a little money in here in case we move forward with that. So we didn't have to do a budget amendment. So we got four hundred thousand there. And then the rest is increase in reserves. We do have something else we would like to add. Right now, the community center's roof is leaking and Public Works has looked at it. They got a contractor to come out and look at it. A lot of it is residual from like fireworks and just the age of the roof. And the same thing with the fire department. So if you remember on those buildings, like the west end of the community center is sloped roof, but the gym portion is a flat membrane roof. And so the bid was about eighty thousand dollars to replace that membrane. And then at the fire department, most of it sloped other than like the bays, and the bid was forty five thousand. So where we're buying brand new bleachers and his floors new, we would like to add that amount so that we could replace those membranes and have a non-leaky facilities over there. But that's in addition. That just kind of came up this week. And so it was after I already had the tentative done. So we'd like to put those things in there. So that's what we've got in the Capital Projects Fund. I don't know if you have questions, comments, concerns.
Council Arnold. Not to go against the mayor, but we got ten thousand dollars in hardship, twelve thousand, something.
Fifteen thousand. So if you add them up, there's thirteen of them. And then it depends what you buy, but I would assume these chairs, when we like looked back or guessed, we thought they were about a thousand bucks a chair. And then you've got like shipping and sell, depending on who we buy them from, sales tax or assembly. So like fifteen grand. You know, we.
I thought it was a little high. And I don't want chairs this big again. But after discussions, like, okay, what do you want? Like a twelve thousand? You know what I mean? So we want to come in under budget.
Kind of where I'm I'm at is I'd I'd rather take the fifteen thousand and give it to the employees for their furniture as opposed to these chairs. I mean.
Would include a bowl.
What's that?
It had both on there, didn't it? Have some for furniture?
Yeah, there's another.
No, no, I'm not just trying to sneak that in. Yeah, I mean, I get that.
There are some pieces of furniture that need to be replaced in this.
Some of these are getting cracked.
Thirty two thousand dollars on ergonomic table.
They better not.
No, these do need to be replaced. Like you can see Stacy's got a crack behind it. A lot of them getting wear and tear on them. They didn't last as long as we'd hoped. But they were expensive. I remember, right? These were a thousand bucks of whack.
So thoughts, consensus? Are you okay with us adding?
Whatever. If you want to take that fifteen thousand and put it towards the building furniture, I don't really care. These chairs are going to be replaced at some point, but.
I mean, I wouldn't mind being able to sit in the chair by myself and reach the floor and roll myself in. If we come in under budget.
You guys said I hate I hate that.
You hate furniture?
No, I'll help you out of your chair. It's all right.
Okay, so I guess probably the two questions is, one, are you okay with us adding? It'd be like a hundred and twenty five thousand for roof replacements at the fire station and the community center. Is that okay?
They're leaking, right? Is that?
They're leaking. They've done their best to replace them or repair them. They said they could probably get by for a year. But I think if you ask Rich, he's like, get me a new roof.
Well, we don't want it to cause more damage.
So you're okay with that? What about the furniture and the chairs? Do you want that left? Are we pulling it?
I like that. I hate this, but that's I'm one of five.
I mean, if you can come in under budget, maybe it's better. Does that make you feel better?
Well, I don't think we're choosing chairs. I think it's.
Staff member, you don't want to replace his chair?
He's got twenty four percent increase. He can buy his own damn chair.
Come in and tell him that, Alan. I want to hear this. What do you guys think? What do you want to do?
I'm okay either way. I mean, we do have to replace them eventually, but they're looking a little trashy.
They're kind of warm.
Maybe we can buy somebody. When you're talking to the other mayors, we can buy some of their leftover.
Some of their chairs, yeah.
Michelle put a big mark on the wall over there earlier, too, from them, so.
Because they just painted this, right?
New chairs, you got to paint the whole frigging inside of the thing.
We'll save the paint.
These are the same chairs as when I was on, right?
Uh, yeah, you would have been. We we replaced these those at the same time.
But these are the same. So these are at least twenty years old.
I think we replaced them since then. Oh, do you? Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, I'm pretty sure they're they've been replaced because we got them at the same time here.
I think I think staff thought they were ten to twelve. But.
Yeah, that's probably about right.
Pretty good run.
Okay, so how about this? I just leave them in there. And if you guys really have heartburn between now and the final budget, you can pull them. But for the time being, I'll just leave it and I'll add the the roof replacements. Okay. All right, that's the fire department. Okay, so now we've got the enterprise funds left. So interest is up. So I've got that there. So the big increase this year is Weber Basin. They're asking for a thirteen, well, they're not asking, they're telling us that we're going to pay thirteen point eight three percent more. A lot of that is due to capital needs that they have. From what Sean told me, they're hoping that over the next five years, their rates go up a bunch. And then they kind of like level off. But they they're kind of like Central Weber, I guess, several years ago. They've got a bunch of needs that the state's kind of like mandating that they do. So we're proposing like we always have, just to pass that rate through to the to the residents. So what that would do to the rates is the three quarter inch would go from twenty one fourteen to twenty four oh six. And then the tiers, this is what they are currently. They're like thirty six cents, ninety one cents, a dollar forty five, two thirteen, two twenty nine. They'd go to forty one cents, a dollar oh four, a dollar sixty five, two forty two, and two sixty one. And then you can see like, here's the commercial on mobile home rates. So that's our proposal in the budget.
Mobile home rates mandated by the state.
Yes, they can't be more than residential. So ours have always been slightly less, just so that we don't ever get into trouble. But I guess some cities tried that as a way to get rid of like mobile home parks is like pricing up.
It it's a private entity.
Right.
And they use X amount of water and it's cheap, cheap.
Yeah.
Like, yeah, I mean, I've seen some bills. It's shocking. Like two bucks a month for a mobile home. It's crazy.
So then we've got some other changes here and like the miscellaneous water. We just adjusted some of these a little bit. We do have this water share fee in lieu. If you remember, that's where they come in and pay us. And then we go to Weber Basin and buy it. So we hadn't budgeted any money there. We're budgeting a little bit of money just so that we have a line item there. And then we've got the reconnect fees. So that was the changes in the revenues. The expenditures, subscriptions and memberships, we reclassified the meter work staff. We were paying for that down below. And so we increased that budget. That's how like we read our meters each month. The wholesale water, we bumped that up with the raise. Engineering, Sean wanted fifty thousand dollars so that he can do some studies associated with America First. So we can kind of like verify things. Special department expenses, we pulled that budget down a little bit to be forty five. This is where it's allocated for some while inspection meters, state fees, various tools and other things. Postage, we bumped that up just a little bit with the postage rates going up to fifteen thousand.
Did we talk about the wholesale water increase previously? Because that's a big jump.
So that's what we pay to, well, what part? That's what we pay to Weber Basin. What we've historically done and what the council is like is just any of those big like Central Weber, Weber Basin, we just pass those increases on to the residents because it's real easy to be like, well, our costs are going up. And you can see that's a significant portion of our water cost. So like, we're just passing the cost increase on to you.
Through the history of time, the city has eaten it. And then the council says, oh, we need to up that. So all of a sudden, it's this big boom that we have nothing to to say about. So we get for something we have no control over. Other than Braden does. He's he goes to the sewer meeting.
Yeah, before it was kind of happening just every once in a while. And it just happened what since I've been on the council, we had to do one. And people were upset about it, but it was because we weren't doing the pass through. So we thought, let's try to not make people angry by just always passing it through.
Yeah. And that big increase, I think you remember, was with the drought rates and stuff. And but we've tried.
That way, we're on the pitchfork side.
Thanks for the history.
So we've tried to just blame Weber Basin for our water rate increases and then do them. It is. It is. It's a huge increase. But then it's easy for us to like toe the line and have small incremental increases rather than big ones. Capital projects.
Worry about it on his mayor's corner.
Yeah. Capital projects, we're rolling over some money there. That's what Sean wanted allocated to your budget notes there. And then we always keep a little money in there in case water stock shares come up to bid or for sale. So we got a little money there, just like we historically have done. This is the offset, just in case you wondered, for that fee and lieu water purchases, just so it's easy for us to track. We've got the revenue account when the money comes in. And then we got the expenditure account when we buy it from Weber Basin. So that's the water fund. The sewer fund, Central Weber, if you remember, I think they've got a two percent increase, but they allocate it based upon property value increases and growth. And so because of our mix, it's only one point four. So we pulled the rate up and are passing that one point four percent or one point three eight, I think it is, is the exact here. So this is what the rate would be. So it'd go from twenty seven forty five to twenty seven eighty three for their new for the ERU or residential rate. So we're proposing passing that along. We also have an increase in the interest revenue in the sewer fund. For the expenditures, their EPA pretreatment fee went up a bunch. So we've got that on here. We haven't paid that yet. That's why it's zero. Central Weber, if you look at it, I have the same budget as the last year. The reason being, Central Weber recently changed to a fiscal year instead of a calendar year. So we always kind of had to guess a little extra because we didn't know what they were going to do to us for half of the next year. But now they switched to a fiscal year to make it easier for cities. So we know exactly what we're paying for the next fiscal year. And so that should cover us. And so we didn't need to do a line item adjustment there. Our equipment, Sean wanted a little more money there. He wanted some engineering, same thing. He's also doing a capital facilities plan in the water fund and the sewer fund. That's why I wanted to increase there. And then certain sewer line replacement and a partial rollover for eight hundred thousand in the capital projects. Stormwater. So stormwater, if you remember, we've always struggled because we haven't had anybody to like, whatever word you want to use to to justify a cost increase on. So Sean and I were talking about, we came up with a new idea and we wanted to see what you guys thought. Because historically, you haven't really loved like CPIs and MCIs and and those kind of things. So what we did is we put together and we thought would see what you thought. So this is our rate increases from our other enterprise funds that we're getting through our other like entities that are passing through. Because we have stormwater increases, it's just hard to justify where they're coming from. So if we take the average of those this year, it's six point one percent. So we'd recommend that this is kind of the methodology we use in the future is just taking the average of the enterprise fund increases and do that in the stormwater. So if you remember, we had a rate increase last year. That's the first rate increase we've ever had since we implemented a stormwater rate. And so we'd propose that six point one percent. So it's an eighteen cent increase per ERU. And that way, it'll just kind of help us keep the hold the line. As far as expenditures go, he wanted a little more money for equipment.
So I'm not worried about the eighteen cents, but our enterprise funds, year over year, six percent?
That's just the increase this year. So remember how we just talked about Weber Basin going up thirteen point eight three.
So I mean, as as we've historically, we're looking at six percent. We're going, that's what we're going up.
Just this year.
Just this year.
They're increasing it that much this year. So it's the average. So next year, if there's no increases, we would do no increase.
But this year, the average of all of our major suppliers was the six point one. So we thought, and then it's easy to justify like, hey, this is the average of what we have in the other funds. So this is what we wanted to do.
I mean, I forget how you got that. I'm just saying, if we're going up six percent year over year, that's.
It wouldn't because we don't always get those big of increases every year, especially like water. That's a pretty big jump. But but it's the same idea. Like they're going up thirteen percent because of the infrastructure. And we've got pretty old stormwater infrastructure. So it helps us be prepared, right? For it just in case something falls apart.
Right. And then just like we talked earlier, like with Catruba's and stuff, there's more stuff they're taking care of and things. And so there's always more costs. So that way, we're just kind of slowly biting that off into the huge chunks. Equipment, we bumped it up to thirty five hundred. Professional services, we bumped it up to ninety thousand from fifty. One thing Sean would like to start doing is video and like cleaning the stormwater lines like they do the sewer. They won't do it on the same rotation. It'll be slower. I think he said like every nine years. But that way.
So historically, on sewer or on stormwater, so on sewer, we clean everything, the minimum we clean them is every three years. No matter what what line you have in front of your house that the city owns, the longest it would ever go without being cleaned is three years. We have some that we clean every six months, just depending on what condition they are, if they have bellies, if they have grease, whatever. Stormwater historically as a city, we've cleaned as needed and not stayed ahead of it. And what we're finding now is sometimes that's a little reactive instead of proactive. So we'd like to put together a program. I don't know the dollar amount yet because we don't know what years we're going to base that on. We're actually working with the vendor right now to to kind of see what other cities are doing and to kind of fill out. And to kind of fill out that program, so we can go ahead and start doing some videos up front to try and see what condition we're in. And then build a program so that we're on a yearly rotation. And everything in the city, we will know in a certain amount of years would be cleaned. Then we'll have others, just like we do on the sewer, that have to be cleaned more frequently. We have one that's in the woods that we should talk about someday, and that one is the one that actually. We purposely back it up to make the creek go behind the Riverdale city residents in the woods. And when we do that, that creates a dam, just like the Beaver does, and all the sediments drops out in us there instead of going out. And so that one's always a cleaning problem and a backup problem, but in the past, historically, when we've talked about that, nobody wanted to take the deal to open the head gate and just let the water go river.
Their own little creek.
Right, and so that's one in the future we should talk about, because we're spending extra on that one down there that we really. I guess it benefits five or six residents there, but the majority of it, we spend more money on them, we should.
Help you with inventorying the infrastructure and being able to establish like master maintenance plans for.
So we have actually went through and identified every catch basin, every manhole, every piece of pipe, we all ha- we have all of that mapped out now. We're working on GIS, Michelle's been helping us with that, um, we've been doing a bunch in-house, it's kind of slow, cause we're doing it in-house, we're doing ourselves. But our stormwater map right now is excellent, um, as far as knowing what everything is, and you always find something new. And the video might show us some stuff that we don't know that's there. And I don't think we're gonna spend that much, I just put it in there as a base number to start somewhere and we'll come back with a program with like a rotation on it for us, so.
But it's really proactive though on helping with flooding prevention.
And that's where we want to see the benefit is, I mean, we typically don't flood anybody, but we don't want to flood anybody. We also have a problem over behind like.
She'll just GIS too.
Still trying to find the other like eight, who said fourteen?
Okay, so that's that depreciation, it's been running a little higher, so I bumped the ba- budget up, capital outlay. You can see we just have some stormwater maintenance collars like that truck buyback prote- program where we've been rotating them every year and then a backup pump for eighteen thousand.
Does that, where does that go?
So right now, how we, so the enterprise funds, we they're um, full accrual accounting. So we actually are kind of like double budgeting, if you will, because technically at the end of the year, when I do my year-end accounting, anything that we bought that was capital. I um, journal entry up to an asset and then we start depreciating it. But we budget this way so that you guys can see what we're putting in the ground each year and what we're spending, so you can kind of approve that. So that depreciation is where it's actually, you're gonna see it, so in theory, we should be putting like eighty, ninety thousand dollars back in the ground each year in the infrastructure. And you can see, we've been doing that to like maintain it, but it's gonna cost more, so that's why our capital is usually higher. Did that answer your question? Okay. Um, so that's the um, stormwater garbage, so um, Sean reached out to the hauler and to the transfer station. So the transfer station says that they're not having an increase, but they wouldn't put it in writing for Robinson. Robinson would like a three percent increase, so we're proposing to pass the three percent increase along. So that's why we got this going up three percent, we also have the interest revenue, so what that would do to staff is. The first can currently is twelve ninety eight, it'd go up thirty nine cents to thirteen thirty seven, each additional would go up twenty cents to be six eighty nine. And the recycling cans would go from three eighty five to three ninety seven. So that's what we're proposing there, um, as far as expenditures go, we did bump the garbage hauler fees up by the three percent. And then we just got the internal service fund charges. So that's all the enterprise funds. So unless you have any questions on those, I'll just keep rolling. So we've got the motor pool fund, so if you remember, that's where we lease the vehicles to all the other departments. So based upon what vehicles they have, I basically charge interest. And then over the life of how long we think we're gonna keep that vehicle to the individual department, so you can see that's going up just a little bit. With new vehicles, I've got some interest income in there and then the sell of assets. This number's hard to guess, because like, next year, for instance, we might still have some police vehicles, cause we've just barely got the last of them in now, it took super long. And so we'll probably sell some of those, Sean's got a backhoe to sell on a few things, so we'll probably exceed that a hundred and fifty thousand, but timing is just hard to know. Um, as far as what we're budgeting for expenditure wise, we bumped a couple of these up, just because they're spending a little bit more equipment and maintenance, that's where we buy. Um, equipment and and kind of like catch all supplies for working on the vehicles. And then we allocate a portion of the shop um, to the motor pool, and so that's the eighty five hundred. As far as what we're budgeting to buy, we talked about these last meeting, but we've got a Jacobson lawnmower, a tractor, another lawnmower, an ATV. We've been rolling over that freight liner dump, Sean tells me that we will finally get that one of these days, maybe even before the end of the year. And and then we've got a new backhoe for the water fund, so all that should total to six fourteen. Um, and we'll just see, some of that could come out of the current year, like if we get that freight liner before June thirtieth, if not, it'll come out of this budget. So that's the motor pool, the IT internal service fund, same kind of thing, we've got that in that internal charge, it's going up slightly. Um, we've got some allocation of interest, um, a little bit of contributions from retained earnings. Um, and the only real change we have, this is where we pay for like Cassell and a lot of that stuff, and we pay for our office three sixty five. Um, we pulled the budget down associated with some equipment, this current year, if you remember, we had to buy like new body cameras and and a bunch of stuff out of this fund, cause then we allocate that cost back to the. General fund, and so we just have a little bit of money in there in case we have a server problem or something that we need to buy. And so that's the IT service fund, so that is all the changes in the budget that we have for this year. Um, and if you remember, it's just a requirement of state law that you guys adopt a tentative budget by the first meeting in May. The state just basically wants to make sure that we're working on a budget, it can actually even be. Just a piece of paper saying we think it's gonna be this or the current year's budget, so you can see we're well down the road. From what we needed to be, but um, Steve wanted to try doing it this way, so that you knew what was in the budget before you actually adopted the tentative. Do you have any questions?
So in the bump in the salary and wages, not to give us off track again, that's gonna, that does right now include the sixty two thousand for the URS for the tier twos.
Right.
What what else does it include?
Just the normal step increases from. The personnel policy, how Stacy does the survey, the wages.
And we do that in lieu of, like, it's the salary increase plus the cola, like, we don't do a separate cola.
Correct, cause basically how that system works, like Stacy probably knows a ton about that from when he was on the council before, but. In theory, how it works is it's basically a database, and so is like South Ogden does a raise, if they participate in it and they report back, they report their information back. And they say, these are all of our positions, and it's done by job description, so hopefully we're matching people accurately. And so they report, this is our wages, Stacy, they can only be two years old, so if people aren't reporting that, sometimes a problem too, Stacy goes in and gets that information. And then um, gets her max and her min and builds the pay scale from that. And so in effect, as other people are giving like colas and those kind of things, it should get reported in that data. And the reason we say we're like a year behind is because whatever they're reporting, so like if they do a raise come July first. And they report that information, when Stacy does it in January, she's getting what they were doing the current year. Now, where we've ran into some issues with public safety and stuff, is historically, people wouldn't do those big increases, like year after year after year, they'd do them and then they'd wait a little while and then they'd do them. And we were surveying every year, so we were touching base more frequently. Well, since COVID, a lot of those people have been doing like large increases every year. And so we've ended up maybe a little bit behind on some of those because of how the markets changed a little bit.
And on the market range, I'm trying to remember, don't, aren't we close to average, if not like slightly one direction or another?
So if you remember, we we take the median, I think if I explain it right, we take the median maximum and we add ten percent to it. So we don't take the very max and add ten percent, we don't beat the highest by ten, but we take the median max.
Last year for other people.
Yeah, and then each year, as long as people's like um, evaluations and things come back right, then they get a step each year. So the scale adjusts and they get a step.
And just for the council's information, I had a discussion with a bunch of the mayors about what they're doing this year, everybody always wants to know, what are you guys doing, what are you doing? They're all doing somewhere three or four percent plus a three or four percent cola, that's kind of around the table, that's what they were all looking at, and we don't do a cola, but.
Well, and it varies based off position, right? Cause it depends on the market.
Right.
So some of them may be only be getting a few percent, some may be getting the full six percent.
Right, and then you got the judge who's getting like twenty four percent.
And the judge.
So like, it's just across the board.
Okay.
So.
But the part that isn't included was the tabled item about the eighty two thousand for the ninety ten split.
That is correct. So, any other questions I can answer? Or do you have any questions?
What was the average?
I don't remember right off the top of my head. Um, and it changes like all the time, I don't know that I know what it is, cause like the judges was just in there. But it was, it's been the same the last couple of years, it's been in now like seven, eight, nine, somewhere somewhere.
Unless it's something special, is it generally under ten percent or eight percent?
And it just depends, cause like some people won't even get a bump. Because you know, like their scale doesn't change, and then other people will get, like the last few years, like public safety and specifically police, like they've got. Like big increases, because that's what the market, that's what everybody was reporting. So, so it just depends, and then if you're the judge, you get whatever the ASC says you get, so.
He doesn't even know, and we're picking on him, but he doesn't even have a clue he's getting that raise.
Yeah.
And was that what you put into this council?
Yeah, I, Stacy gives me a list of all the wages of what the amounts are, and so then I have a huge spreadsheet that I plug all those in. And then um, I plug those into the benefits, so.
Cause I I just. Yeah, I calculated, yeah, and uh, I I took the the. Amount that's there, the ninety. Five seventy nine and minus subtracted out ten eighty, which is the fifteen dollar per month per person. And uh, then divided it by the current year budget, and it's nine point four.
We haven't done the market rate increase for a few years, so they put it in there, right? But then the last time, we still have to adopt it by ordinance. And I, when we adopted by ordinance in the past couple of years since I've been here, we haven't taken the full percentage. But we've taken a little bit, mostly because of this huge gap in the market rate that's been happening. Is that right?
Right.
Okay.
Right, and then like if we have somebody who changes scales, like if we have how Stacy does it, like if Sean has a guy that he qualifies, like he was a. Public Works two, and now he's a three or whatever, and he changes scales, she includes that in there. So whenever we have any of those changes, she includes that on the spreadsheet and then for you guys too, so. Any other questions? Do you have any que- do you want to ask any more questions about the? Um, URS stuff?
Yeah, we we probably need to go back to that before we adopt the tentative budget, I I think. So, if there's no more questions for Mr. Carden, we will go back to agenda item four.
Just so, okay, so the two point four, two point six million that we're carrying over.
Mm-hmm.
Right. From a seventeen million dollar budget, that's, I mean, it's basically, that's our savings account versus what we're, our operating budget. So, I mean, we're rolling on like. Two, two to three months worth of savings.
Well, that's what we're transferring each year, I believe in.
That's not the fund balance.
So I would have to look, I haven't looked like the recently, I want to say we've got like thirteen million or something sitting in our capital projects fund. So in all reality, we've got probably, depending on like what we spent, but we've got about a year's worth of reserve on hand. Because of like some of those accounting things and stuff, and then we also have that, what did I tell you, like five point? Something million, that's the rainy day, as you guys call it, it's the unrestricted fund balance. Um, sitting here, so we've got like.
We beat Dave Ramsey's.
Yeah, so we're doing really well, I mean, like, but that doesn't mean we need to go hire a bunch of employees and those kind of things, cause if we did that.
Somebody gonna bounce us for a building.
Yeah.
Want a building?
Well, we're gonna start checking into the feasibility of a.
Yeah, we're working on that, well, and Brandon will have a report on that soon too, to give you some other ideas, some other options maybe for us, so. We're, we're trying to look at options we have available, so we can present something to you and let you make a decision on that. There's certain things we've got to do, like that roof is a constant problem. And the windows, this looks like a ghetto around here sometimes, with how many cracks and stuff we have in those windows and the stains in our ceilings and things like that. It's starting to show its age, there's no question. But that's a good question, and so if you if you have questions, let's get them asked, like. I mean, let's, let's make sure we understand exactly what we're dealing with, but to your, to your point earlier. We're looking at about a two point six million shortage in twenty thirty. And right now, we would never want to plan on this, but because of the the environment with interest rates and just where things are at, we are pulling in a significant amount of money. Right now, in interest and franchise fees, you know, and stuff like that, and so. Like Cody says, we don't want to hire a bunch of people and go out and waste a bunch of money, but the situation is not. As dire as, you know, as as sometimes it's been made out, we've, we've been conditioned, and we've done a good job for fifteen years, the thirteen years you've been here, toe the line.
And we've.
I flinch, I I flinch, when I, when I pull up the packet and read the stuff, I flinch.
Right, and that's good, that's what we want everybody to do.
And hopefully twenty thirty is more like a speed bump, and that's what we're hoping for, we've really been. Um, the mayor and Steve and I were talking about it, whatever words you want to use, like whether it's planned or blessed or whatever. Like with the sales tax really going up during COVID, we are in a pretty good spot right now. As long as things, the economy stays good and and that, and even with the property taxes. Um, because of the the rate increase that you guys proposed a couple of years ago, we're getting more off growth too. Because if you remember, we're guaranteed the same amount as we got the previous year, plus then like any growth, so with some of the redevelopment we've had and things. Like that n- number for last year was like a hundred and fifty thousand. So, so that's helping us more too, and as those new developments come in, we're getting more out of that, like as they build those new homes that we talked about earlier and things, so. So all of that is really helping.
What's, what's America First gonna do to us? They're, they're talking huge numbers.
So a lot of that, and like, it depends on what they do and what you guys allow them to do, I mean, the the offset is. Whatever they do, if we put it all in an RDA, then we don't get that money for the life of the RDA, right? So that's seventeen years, so we're basically going seventeen years without getting a raise, taking care of America first, if we do that. Now, we get way more, we invest a dollar and we get twenty bucks or whatever, right? Cause we're getting all the other entities' property tax, but you guys will kind of have to look at that. And like right now, that building they're building right now, that's almost done, it's not in the RDA. Now, they've talked to us about like expanding the RDA and some of that, so if we do some of that, like right now, we would get the money for that building. But if we expand the RDA and we trigger the RDA, then then that money would kind of go to the RDA. So we'll just have to see, it depends what happens, it depends what you guys want to do, it depends on how much money you want to give to the RDA. We work on that a ton internally, like we have meetings at least once a week internally on that. But there, the balls are still like up in the air enough that it's hard to, we don't really have a plan to bring you guys yet.
I I think the safe thing to say though is it's very optimistic, not, not just America first, but we've had some, I don't know how you'd describe them, some rather heated meetings lately with them. Not, not in a bad sense, but just sticking up for our own rights to make sure we're not just giving it the farm away up there, and they've been somewhat receptive to it, but. We're headed in the right direction, not only there, but other good things in the city, again, I always say that to you, and I can't tell you what, but we're, we're, I think it's gonna be a good year. Once we kind of get some of this stuff ironed out, but it's, it's a long haul, we'll probably end up coming back with a proposal of a combination of options. Um, but not just, we, we don't want to carry the. But not just, we, we don't wanna carry the, the ball on this thing. And so we've made that known quite frequently lately and, and they're good. I think we're, we're, we're gonna make this thing work out really nice. But overall, it's gonna be a good deal for us.
Yeah, I, I heard they were coming back for some big asks for the city, but they were more worried about the, the school board.
Well, they did initially and we, we kinda countered with a different proposal and, and it's, I think we're gonna be okay. I really do.
If you remember, we lost about forty thousand dollars a month when RC Willie went away. It was a big hit to our sales tax. And now we've got Ashley in, which probably won't be quite as big, but you know, we've got other things coming around. And so there's, there's a reason for optimism, I think. And so. Hey, there's a lot of people that are excited about it.
And just on the property tax note too, so it's whatever was on the ground as of January first. So like Tesla, this year we won't get anything for. But if they're done by December thirty first, then next year, that's in the RDA, so it's gonna go to the RDA. But the assessed value would be as of January first. And so there, you know, like that one should be, you know, like millions of dollars worth of growth. Yeah, I'm just talking property tax right now. But yeah, sales tax, hopefully too, that one will be.
We had some discussions just today with them and there were some good things on that. In that regard, there could be some potential sales tax there. I don't think we're really banking on that. So not, not huge amounts, but some, so better than what we thought. We'll see. It's all looking good.
Okay, so um let's go back to item number four. Uh, this is the resolution to pick up the contribution for public safety and firefighter tier two. Um, I think we had a little bit of a proposal once before. Anybody have any comments on that?
I think I could make a motion.
Okay.
Although it would require a change of the resolution, can we do that? That we approve the resolution twenty twenty four dash zero nine. Concerning the pickup contribution for URS for our tier two employees, both public safety and non-public safety. But to change it so that it's to match what's being reduced. So the four point seven three from public safety, right? And then the point seven from the normal employees.
That's in, in addition to their two point.
And then cover what the new, the new is, so it doesn't impact their pay.
We have a motion. And we have a second. Any discussion on that motion? Ms. Marigoni, will you please pull the council?
Councilor Richter?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilor Stevens?
Did you hear the motion?
We have a quorum, so.
Yeah, okay.
Councilor Haas?
Yes.
Councilor Arnold?
Yes.
Okay. All right, well, that passes. We'll now move on to, yeah.
Way out of character for me, but I, I would like to untable the ninety ten discussion before we get into the tentative budget. Cause we can untable it, right?
I second that.
Here we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Oh, sorry.
Can we discuss?
Oh, yeah, yeah. Any discussion on the motion, sorry.
Here's the one problem we'd have with that though, where we didn't, I mean, I know it's on the table, but we don't have it on an agenda. So I don't know that we should really be taking action on. I mean, if we just wanted to do some general discussions. But we didn't really give the public notice on something like that without it being on the agenda.
Do we need to, even though it's a previous agenda item?
I, I still think I would as a matter, just because it involves public funds and things like that.
We don't have to do that. I mean, we can do what you're saying, but we can add, I, I'm in favor of it. If we're doing well, the ninety ten would be great for helping the employees. You know, when we're not, things aren't on fire and like I live my life. But it's a, I, I would like to see it come forward, which Cody would have to put it in the, the tentative budget.
And that's what I would prefer that we did is we put it in there where that's not binding. We can still bring it up in the final one, if there was a consensus in doing that.
So we, we don't need to untable it, cause we do it in the tentative budget. We just add the, the funds there. We'd put it on the agenda, untable it next time. Is it gonna be done in time to be able for the open season?
We'll just have to ask Stacy, which, yeah, we'll have to talk about it. I mean, worst case, it would be for next year. Yeah, which the employees would, I'm sure would still appreciate, so.
Councilor Haas, you had a comment?
Yeah, I was gonna. Not sure what I was gonna say now, but. For, for that, I, I mean, I, I understand the, the issue of having that available. When they're making their decisions on, in open enrollment. But. I can't imagine that that's gonna have a huge impact on their decisions. I mean, it, it, it might, but. But it's, I, I just. See everybody just being happier.
Okay, that's a good comment. I understand what you're getting at. Um, we did have a motion and a second, so we probably still need to have a vote on whether to untable that. So Ms. Marigoni, will you pull them on, on, on tabling that?
Would you just restate the question again, please?
Oh, yes. Hey Bart, so um they were uh voting to untable the discussion. About the ninety ten split for insurance from last meeting.
Okay, all right, okay, untabling it. All right, go ahead.
I withdraw the motion.
Yeah, and I'm okay with that. It's the second, rather than voting on it.
Can we do that?
Yeah.
Okay.
The motion's been withdrawn, so uh we will not vote on it. It will not be untabled. All right. So we do need to. Uh, next thing is our uh resolution twenty twenty four dash ten. Adopting the Riverdale City tentative budget for fiscal year twenty twenty five. Mr. Carden, if you have anything to add?
Can I just recap to make sure that I've got like everything that we're changing? So the URS, we're gonna change that to what you just approved. So it'll be like three point two nine for the regular tier two employees, the four point seven three for the public safety. We are adding the roof replacement for the community center and the fire station. And then I'm adding the ninety ten.
I, I think you would just go ahead and do that and then they can decide on the final budget if they wanna leave it in.
Okay, all right. I just wanted to kinda like recap and make sure I hadn't missed anything. Okay, that's all I have unless you have any other questions. And just, let me just add one thing, June eighteenth would be the final budget adoption, just so that you've got it on your calendar, if you wanna make sure you're here.
We wanna do truth and taxation. We have to decide by that meeting.
We'd need to decide by that meeting. Right now, y- you can see, I always budget high, right? And then I adjust it down, so we don't lose any of our growth. So right now, we're, we don't have it built into the budget to do truth and taxation, but if you'd like to, we can. Um, or if there's something else you would like to do, like if you're like, well, we don't wanna go through truth and taxation, but we wanna talk about it a bunch. Or something, we can do whatever you guys would like. We just weren't sure and we didn't want you to say, well, we hadn't asked. And so we put it on there if you guys wanted to do something. If you remember, if we go through truth and taxation, we do have to pay like all the notices and stuff. So I think last time it cost us like ten thousand dollars. So that's the only downside is like there is a cost there, cause we have to like send out all those notices. And we don't know how much that costs, cause it depends who else is raising property taxes. The county shares it with everybody. It could be cheaper. It could be more depending on if this year, so that's the only downside to like going through it and not doing anything. And then if you remember, we have to set a dollar amount and we can't go below that. So we could say, hey, we're gonna do this. And then at the end, you guys could decide not to raise it or to raise it a buck or whatever. But we would have to pay like the notices is the only downside.
If we were to do a consensus of that, I, I would be a no this year. Feel like I have raw wounds, road rash of some sort.
But does that mean you're gonna be supportive next year when other people are running for office again, like we were supportive of you to not do?
We talked about it internally just a little bit. I don't know what you guys think and you guys are the ones where the rubber meets the road. Next year, if we did it, it would actually be after the election. Because the election would be in November, right? And then. Well, it depends, cause so I'm, so the next election would be November twenty twenty five, right? So that'd be fiscal year twenty twenty six. We're talking about fiscal year twenty twenty five. So if we did it for twenty twenty six, we actually wouldn't talk about it until like January or February of twenty twenty six. And the election would be in November of twenty twenty five. So I don't know what works better politically and stuff, but that might, if you're trying not to like have it happen right before an election. For some of you and not the others. It depends.
It just seems so important to hold all of us accountable that we assess it occasionally. And so we don't end up in the same position we were in, where we had to make such a drastic increase.
And some cities, what they do is they, I think South Ogden's been doing it, I think every year, but I think Washington Terrace does it every other year. So they just say like every even year, we're gonna do it. I mean, we can do whatever you guys want. It doesn't matter.
That was what I was gonna say. If we do the truth in taxation, this time, we would be ha- holding the hearing. In September of twenty four.
Right.
If we do it next year, we would be holding it.
Yeah, and I guess.
Just two months before the election.
Yeah, and I guess it depends what year you wanna do. I was meaning we do it for the next fiscal year. So it'd actually be like two years out, I guess. But I don't know if you wanna wait that long. I, I don't know. It's really up to you guys.
Think about it, I guess.
Got a couple of weeks to think about it.
Second date was that you need, it needs to be done by, a, a decision needs to be done this year.
So it would just need to be done by our finer bu- final budget adoption, which is June eighteenth this year.
Which is when?
June eighteenth. It's that second meeting in June.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, uh, Councilor Haas.
Move to approve resolution number twenty four, twenty twenty four dash ten. A resolution of the Riverdale City Council acknowledging receipt of and adopting the tentative budget for the city of Riverdale. For fiscal year twenty twenty five, July one twenty twenty four? Through June thirtieth, twenty twenty five?
You got it.
Yeah, it says twenty three.
Oh, sorry. Thank you. We have a motion.
No.
No.
We need to have the amendments.
Oh, with the amendment.
Including the amendments that we have discussed, that Cody, so. Listed so well.
Okay, and we have a second. Any discussion on that motion? Ms. Marigoni, will you please pull the council?
Councilor Arnold?
Yes.
Councilor Richter?
Yes.
Councilor Haas?
Yes.
Councilor Stevens?
Yeah.
Councilor Hansen?
Yeah.
All right, that passes unanimously. Thank you. Sure, uh Bart, we missed your vote on uh the resolution twenty twenty four dash zero nine. About picking up the contribution for the tier, tier two employees. Did you wanna vote?
No.
It was a no. Okay. Okay. We'll move on to the comments section of our agenda. Any comments from the city council? Councilor Arnold?
I have a request from the Riverdale Estates Mobile Home Park. Um, they said ever since we put in the fence, um, we haven't been, that hasn't been cared for along the fence. And they're getting all kinds of mice and snakes and they're wondering if you can mow a path or by the fence. Yeah, they, they just said they've had a huge increase in mice and snakes. And they were just wondering if the city could do something with their property to. Help combat some of that. Well, and some, some of the people were caring for the larger yards of whatever. And, and if it doesn't work, I don't, I mean, I don't wanna spend the time or anything, but we just need to. We just need to be able to explain it to them. Thank you.
Um, can you send us all of those charts and stuff that weren't in the packet? That was super helpful.
The sales tax ones?
I mean, even the highlighted stuff that you did send us, but it was highlighted on yours.
All that pretty highlighting where the changes were.
And do you mind sending us, if you do send that, will you also send us the current fund balances, just so we?
Sure. Sure. Yeah, I think so. It's big. It's like fifteen megabytes. So if depending, like it should work if we send it to your city email. But if we send it to your personal email and you don't get it, that's probably why. Can I add one thing?
Yeah.
If you guys would like a report or some kinda handout that when you're talking to the legislature members. Or somebody that is beneficial for you guys, like we're all for it. I just don't know what that is. So if like you like some of those charts, like with the sales tax to show what happened, like we can do whatever you like. I just don't know what to give you. But if you need, if you can help me and we can come up with a packet, so you kinda can have something that you can give to people. And like, look, this is Riverdale's story. This is where we're at. This is where, this is so important. I'm all for it. I think we're all for it. We just don't know quite what you want or what you need.
Money, uh, the budget and numbers is where we're gonna win. It looks large, like for us. I think the, the thing that we need to sell them on is what we're doing with our funds. You know, I mean, cause you, you show what the police is doing along Riverdale Road versus the rest of the world in Riverdale. It's massive. I mean, it's impactful. So, I mean, I, I think doing it budget wise will kill us. Cause it, it, money doesn't mean anything to anybody. I mean, there's no really value when you look at actual zeros. But if you look at what's going on, n- nothing beats Riverdale Road with the, the police. You know, cause you say at night, I mean, if we show. I don't even know what, what, what you guys use, eight AM to eight PM and eight PM to eight AM.
Oh, usually, usually we go six to four, four to two, and then another six to four, and then eight to six.
But that's, that's your shifts. I'm saying, like if your craziness is Riverdale Road from eight AM to eight PM. And then it's sleepy little Riverdale from eight PM to eight AM. And I, I mean, I don't know. I'm not shooting people, so.
Different people operate at different times of the day.
Right, right.
And maybe what we could even do is like show us versus like Pleasant View. Cause if you look at Pleasant View, they're pretty close population wise. But like their difference in number of officers and things like that, that might be easier to show. Like, look, there is a real cost for us maintaining all this and we're not getting it in like the current sales tax.
The state's taking it away. But the state is also, I mean, we're, we're providing it for the state to take it away.
For sure.
Cause we have two senators, cause Cal's, Cal's running unopposed. And Anne, I mean, we have two senators that will. And, and I mean, we have two senators that will call, like you can talk to, just call them. Big deal.
Counselor Haas?
Um, I just wanted to um, get this on the record. The swim nights are May twenty-ninth, June eleventh, July second. July thirtieth and August thirty-first.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments from the council? Any comments from the city staff? Okay. One, one quick comment to Chief Warren. Um, we were discussing with uh, the West Haven mayor about his new Walmart. And the fact that he doesn't have a property tax and he doesn't have a police force and uh, everyone is giving him a hard time and saying, uh, you get Walmart, you're gonna need a police force. So it really does follow right along. Um, you don't, you don't have a Walmart and not have police. So um, anyway. Uh, I, I don't have anything else. So uh, with that, we would need a motion to adjourn. Motion and second, any discussion? All in favor say yes?
Yes.
All right.
Yes.
We're adjourned.
Thanks for sticking it out with us. You guys are medicated. You earned your market increase.